Welcome to the Finance Committee Joint Meeting with the Planning Board, March 18, 2025. Just a reminder that this meeting is being taped by our friends at WCTV. Also, there will be a three-minute limit on public comments. I'll begin by taking roll call for the Finance Committee. John Dougherty, excused. Mary Ann Galeazzo.
Here.
Kristi Oreo, excused. Brad Jackson.
Here.
Andy Levine.
Here.
Joe Livino.
Here.
Anthony Nelson.
Here.
Scott Neville.
Here.
And Teresa Manganielli. Now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chair Boland from the Planning Department.
Okay. So I will do a roll call as well for the Planning Board. On Zoom, Sean Henigan.
I'm here.
On Zoom, Deanna Craig. Here with us, Peter Moser.
Here.
And Terry Boland here. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Master in Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Planning Board is holding a public hearing tonight with the Finance Committee on articles proposed for the warrant at the annual town meeting and special town meeting to be held May 3, 2025. We'll now address the articles. Article 24, "To see if the town will vote..." "to see if the town will vote to accept the roadways known as Eagle View Drive, Murray Hill Circle, and the previously unaccepted portion of Eleanor Drive as public ways as recommended by the Planning Board and as heretofore laid out by the Select Board, which streets are shown on plans entitled Conservation Subdivision Design, Murray Hill Subdivision, Public Way, Wilmington, Massachusetts, Prepared for CS New House Builders, Inc., dated January 9, 2014, revised through February 13, 2015, prepared by Design Consultants, Inc., and recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book 239, Plan 138, six sheets, copies of which plans are on file in the office of the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase gift and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in such streets for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Wilmington in access slope, drainage, and other easements related thereto. And further, to raise and appropriate... "...transfer from available funds and/or borrow pursuant to any enabling authority a sum of money to be expended by the town manager with the approval of the Select Board for such purposes, or take any other action related thereto." Are there any comments or questions from the Board? None? Are there any comments or questions from the public on this article? Okay. Moving on to the next. Article 26, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the current accessory apartment section 4.2 in its entirety and replacing it with a new section 4.2, or to take any other action related thereto." Rather than reading the entire article, I'll ask the Planning Director to give a presentation.
Thank you. Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of Article 26, which is accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. So first of all, what is an ADU? What's an accessory dwelling unit? In short, in very short, they're self-contained housing units accessory to the principal dwelling. You might know them better as... People call them in-law apartments. So they take on different forms. Sometimes they are detached. Sometimes they're attached, like an addition. Sometimes they're in the basement. Sometimes they're above a garage. So there's different ways that you can locate an accessory dwelling unit. So in 2024, there was legislation that made ADUs standard across the state. And that legislation made it so that towns have to allow ADUs as of right without a special permit, so they can get a building permit, no discretionary approvals of a size up to 900 square feet. And that became effective in February. So that's currently in effect. But Wilmington has had an ADU bylaw for a very long time. So that bylaw allows attached owner-occupied ADUs of up to 1,250 square feet. So as you can see, the... There are some things that may not match up with what the overall state legislation said. So we needed to catch our bylaw up to what is currently the case with the law. So I'm going to go through in the next slide and just sort of go through the items that where our existing bylaw says one thing and what's being proposed to match up to the state law. So right now, our existing bylaw, we require a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy. So the owner of the property has to live in either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. So that's no longer allowed per the state requirements. So we can't have a requirement for owner occupancy. So that goes away. Another item is the sizing. Currently, we allow up to 1,250 square feet and a maximum of two bedrooms. The change in that is that the state legislation has an allowance for 900 square feet or half the gross floor area, whichever is smaller. There's no bedroom regulation. So it's only a size. It doesn't regulate the number of bedrooms that you can have. Another item is that our existing bylaw makes it so that you have to have an attached ADU and design it so that it looks like a big, single-family. So that's no longer allowed. Both attached and detached are allowed. So we had to make that change to our bylaw. And then lastly, we have an existing requirement for one parking space for an ADU. And that's really pretty much the same, except per the legislation, you can't require parking, additional parking for the ADU if you're within a half-mile of a transit station. So those are some of the changes that we're making to kind of catch our bylaw up to what is now the standard across the state. The Planning Board did have a conversation while this was being drafted. They had a conversation about whether to update the bylaw, to include the new legislation, but also maybe keep an option for the larger unit that's owner-occupied. But when this was discussed, we kind of quickly came to the realization that if you left... If you had two options, in theory, you could end up with both of those options on a lot. So that would mean that you have a principal dwelling. You could do a special permit for an ADU of 1,250 square feet. But then you could also do a by right 900-square-foot ADU as well. So you'd end up with three dwellings on one lot. And we didn't think that that would be the preferred option for that. So what's being proposed is that the bylaws being completely replaced with the new standard requirements that are applied to the state. There are a lot of constraints to this. The biggest one, I think, is septic constraints. So if you have a four-bedroom house and you have a four-bedroom septic, you can't add more bedrooms in an accessory dwelling unit without upgrading your septic system or constructing a new septic system just for the accessory dwelling unit. And that is... We're finding that's actually a large constraint for folks who are looking into this. You still have to meet building setbacks. And I guess the takeaway from this is that the changes are meant to mirror the state legislation. And it's really not... Since we already have a bylaw, folks can come in and do ADUs currently. This isn't going to result in a kind of a mad dash on ADUs because we already have that allowance. So it's not going to change a whole lot, but we did want to update the bylaw to match those requirements.
Thanks. Are there any questions from the Board or the Committee? Okay, seeing none. Any public comments on this article?
My name's Tony Barletta. Live at 20 Swain Road. I've grown up here. Lived here all my life. Raised my kids here. Plan on staying here. I'm also a member of the Board of Appeals. I've been on the Board of Appeals for probably 15 years now. But I'm here speaking on my own behalf, not as a member of the Board. I'm also working as an architect for over 30 years. So I've sat on both sides of the table and dealt with zoning and bylaws for my whole career. I'm here because I have some concerns about the proposed bylaw change being proposed, modifying the current accessory apartment section of our bylaws. Wilmington's had an accessory apartment bylaw allowing 1,250 square feet for many years. I don't believe there have been any many issues or misuse of this provision, and it has provided some well-needed housing relief for families and their aging parents. The new state law now loosens the restrictions associated with what we refer to as ADUs now. Wilmington's proposed change will reduce the size of the accessory use that we currently allow. I believe there are several reasons why reducing the size of the current allowance is a mistake. Why this... What this does is take away or reduce the residents' current ability to develop their property under the current bylaws. I do not think this is the spirit of what the state intended. Just as members of other town boards have stated that the MBTA bylaw should not be a one-size-fits-all, I think the same logic could apply to this case. Where 900 square feet might be appropriate in a city such as Somerville or Medford, maybe 1,800 square feet is appropriate in Western or Broughton. Wilmington has used 1,250 square feet in the past and is likely appropriate for this town, or there would have been a change or an effort to change it already. A change to the bylaw which now allows detached ADUs should have no bearing on the square footage, as many other surrounding towns have accessory dwelling unit provisions already. We are now joining what I believe is a common use allowance. Also, 900 square feet is not actually 900 square feet. When comparing 900 square feet of an accessory unit to 900 square feet of a market-rate apartment, there's a difference. The difference is net square footage versus gross square footage. In other words, the usable or interior space of the residents would be inside the finished walls, where the gross square footage would include the finished walls and unusable space. With the more stringent insulation requirements on new construction, 2-by-6 construction has become almost necessary and would further reduce the space of the dwelling. The net square footage of a 900-square-foot ADU could possibly be 800 square feet. Reducing the square foot also goes against promoting the creation of additional housing, making this more restrictive and difficult to create housing alternatives, is the reason the state is forcing zoning like MBTA requirements on towns. This square-footage reduction could cause some property owners to reconsider such a project. And last but most important, the other reason... The other reasons I've stated, 350-square-foot reduction may not seem like a lot, but given the original intent of this bylaw as an in-law apartment, it will affect the space greatly. Consider the space needed for an accessible bathroom, clearances in the kitchen, or a bedroom for an elder that might need a wheelchair assistance. This reduction in square footage could be the difference between making an accessible bathroom fit or not, and goes against what we all know is we need is elder housing. In closing, I know these are difficult issues to address. And like these boards, I'm also a volunteer and appreciate the time and effort you've all put in for our town and agree the bylaw needs to be modified. I believe in this case, it needs to be... Needs a bit more thought, as there are many factors that may not have been considered fully. Remember that we still have the zoning setback requirements to protect against overcrowding on lots. This reduction in the ability for development of the property is just not needed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Newhouse from 136 Glen Road. The previous speaker covered a lot of the points that came to mind for me when I reviewed the proposed bylaw. But really, to me, the 1,250 square feet makes sense for Wilmington, and that's why I think the town worked hard over a course of a number of years to kind of get to what we have, even through town meeting. And I understand that, you know, having a mandate from the state is... You know, that's not always convenient, and that can be difficult for us as a town to deal with. But I do think that if we roll back the 1,250 square feet to 900 square feet, in a lot of respects, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And I think mostly of the existing homes, going forward, I'm of the opinion that there are very few lots and properties in this town that are going to accommodate the detached ADUs. I mean, between septic restrictions, wetlands, zoning setbacks, et cetera, I just don't believe that there's a lot of potential out there. And on top of that, the cost is extraordinary. And I'm not sure that folks who maybe haven't been associated with a big home improvement for a long time, if they would appreciate just how costly the detached ADUs are going to be. I mean, it's 350 grand all day long. So from my perspective, I'd hate for us to lose a valuable tool in the town's arsenal for people to be able to create affordable housing for their families. And I also think about kind of the development... The history of development in town, right up through the '90s, I think a lot of the houses would accommodate the kind of that easy conversion to a 900-square-foot ADU in the basement. And that's something that, you know, many more folks can afford than the detached unit. But a lot of the houses that have been built since the '90s, most of them are bigger boxes and bigger footprints. And to limit the footprint or the square footage to 900 square feet is going to create, in my mind, some really funky cutouts in the basement. So I mean, I'll use my house as an example. I think my footprint in the basement is roughly 11-something. So I'd have to figure out where I build a wall in the middle of the basement to create the appropriate space for a 900-square-foot ADU, and then figure out where I can put my second means of access and egress as well. So I just think we're going to exclude a lot of homes for the potential of that easy, more affordable... Relatively easy and more affordable option of creating living space in space that already exists in the dwelling. So for those reasons, and for a lot of reasons the previous speaker talked about, I'd hope that perhaps we can take another look just at the 900 or the 1,250 and figure out if it makes more sense to keep the 1,250.
Good evening. Carolyn Fenn, 37 Lawrence Street. I actually just have a question, and forgive my ignorance, but could you comment on the difference between an accessory dwelling unit regulations and if I just had a house and I wanted to put an addition, it's not an accessory dwelling unit? Are those two different things? And could you just talk about that for a moment?
Good. Yeah, please.
Sure. So this would apply... Sorry. If you were putting an addition on your house, it would be completely different than an accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is really a housing unit that has all the things of a housing unit. So it has a kitchen, a bathroom, bedroom. So it's its own little unit, whereas, you know, putting an addition on your house wouldn't necessarily have all of those components. So it acts as its own two means of egress. It's like a little... It's an apartment, basically.
Any other public comment on this article, 26? Okay. Move on to the next. Article 28, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Board or Officer currently having care, custody, management, and control..." I apologize. Got to go back to Article 27. I went too far in my document here. Article 27, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the current floodplain district section 6.2 in its entirety and replacing it with a new section 6.2, or take any other action related thereto." Again, rather than reading the article, I'll ask the Planning Director for a summary.
Thank you. This article... We have to have a compliant zoning article related to floodplain to enable residents to get flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. So there are times when we need to update this bylaw. Definitely when we get new maps, which was the case in this update. We also needed to update some outdated language, definitions, and technical requirements. And the state is really helpful. They actually give us the language that we need to use. They have a model bylaw that we basically took from to create this bylaw, so that we're meeting all of the state's requirements. They reviewed it. They checked all the boxes that this bylaw does indeed meet those requirements. So I won't go over all of the changes, but I did want to highlight one of them, which was the current process for work... If you're doing work within floodplain... I'll keep going. If you're doing work in floodplain, you have to go through two different boards here at the town. You have to go to the Conservation Commission, because work in floodplain... Floodplain's a resource area. So you go to the Conservation Commission. They're reviewing your project. Engineering takes a look at it, making sure that you are meeting all the requirements for work within floodplain. It includes a public hearing, public notice. Typically, following that process, where you've got all your technical aspects worked out, you also need to get a zoning permit. And that zoning permit currently is through the Board of Appeals, through a special permit process, which is, again, a public hearing, notice to, a butters, legal ad in the paper. So you're actually going through two different boards with two public hearings for the same project. With this change, we took the opportunity to streamline that process a little bit, and other towns have done this too, where they changed the zoning Board of Appeals special permit to an administrative permit through the Building Department. So what would happen would be, you'd still go through your conservation commission's public hearing process, all of that, notice to a butters. But then, for your zoning permit, you'd actually go through the Building Department. The review would be done by the Building Inspector, the Conservation Agent, the Health Department, and the Engineering Department to review those materials that they've previously reviewed through the Conservation Process and get that permit administratively without the second public hearing and notice and all of that process. So we took the opportunity to streamline that a bit and make that process a little bit easier for folks.
Thanks. Any questions from the Board or the Committee? Okay. Any public comment on Article 27? Okay. Seeing none. Moving on. Okay. Now we have Article 28, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Board or Officer currently having care, custody, management, and control of the parcels of land described below for the purposes... For the purposes for which said parcels are currently held to the care, custody, and control of the Wilmington Conservation Commission for conservation and passive recreation purposes pursuant to the provisions of Section 8C of Chapter 40 of the General Laws, and further to dedicate and designate said parcels for such purposes in perpetuity, subject to the protections of Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution." Assessors Map 3, Parcel 4, located on Noah Street. Assessors Map 3, Parcel 5, located on Noah Street. Again, I'll ask the Planning Director to give us a brief description.
Thank you. I'm going to orient you to this graphic that's on the screen. On the right side of the screen is Chestnut Street, and the road that you see kind of going through the middle there is Green Meadow Drive. It's one of our fairly newer subdivisions. The green is open space that is protected, open space, care and custody of the Conservation Commission. And that open space was created when those subdivisions, Green Meadow, Mill Road, and Murray Hill, up to the top of the screen, when those were created, they created open space, public open space. So the green is the open space currently. The orange are trails that run through that open space. And then if you look to the yellow parcels, those are the parcels that we're talking about in this article. They're town-owned property. But as you can see, there's trails running through them. And it's actually the property that was the home of the Clap Mill, which is a historic mill. And in 2001, the town acquired those two parcels, and Burlington acquired the parts that were in Burlington adjacent to ours to make sure that the Clap Mill was preserved and to have those... That land as recreational open space. So this parcel... Or this article is... The proposal is to transfer those two yellow town-owned parcels to the Conservation Commission, which would turn them green, and to protect that land as open space with Article 97 protection. I lost my thought. So the proposal is to change... Is to transfer to that use the open space to the protection of Article 97, and happy to take any questions on that.
Thanks. Any questions from the Board or Committee? Any public comment? Okay. We'll move on to 29. Article 29, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Wilmington zoning bylaw as follows: To prohibit short-term rentals in all zoning districts, or take any other action related thereto. One, add a definition of short-term rental as Section 1.3.14..." Yeah, as follows, "And renumber the remainder of Section 1.3 accordingly. Short-term rental and owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or non-owner-occupied property, including but not limited to: an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging, house, or bed-and-breakfast establishment, where: One, at least one room or unit is rented to an occupant or suboccupant; Two, all accommodations are reserved in advance, provided, however, that a private owner-occupied property shall be considered a single unit if leased or rented as such; And Three, rentals are for a time period of 31 consecutive calendar days or less. Two, amend Section 3.7.1 by inserting the underlying language as follows: 3.7.1 prohibited uses. The following uses are expressly prohibited in all zoning districts of the town. Short-term rental and the remainder remains the same." Again, I'll ask the Planning Director for a brief explanation.
Thank you. So first, what are short-term rentals? Terry just read the definition, but really, you know them as Airbnb types of arrangements. So short-term arrangements that are, you know, that you book online and that aren't a hotel, motel, or bed-and-breakfast. So this article is really kind of a housekeeping article for us. Currently, our bylaw does not talk about short-term rentals at all. So... And when that's the case, it's interpreted that because it's not in the bylaw, it's prohibited. So currently, our bylaw doesn't talk about it, and the way it's interpreted is that short-term rental is prohibited in town. So Airbnb types of arrangements aren't allowed in town. So with the attention to accessory dwelling units... So with the attention to accessory dwelling units and folks kind of thinking about maybe creating spaces to rent out, we thought it's probably good if folks can look at the bylaw and know whether something like that is allowed or not. So the proposal is to define the use and then be very clear that it's prohibited in all of the districts, as is currently the case. So it's really kind of just taking the existing condition and making it very clear for folks who are looking to find out whether they could open an Airbnb unit.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or the committee? Okay. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Jump into Article 33. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington as follows, or take any other action related thereto. By rezoning from residential 20, R20, to general business, GB, the parcel of land shown as Parcel 53 on Wilmington Assessors Map 42, which parcel is more particularly described as follows, the land at 306 Main Street. Attorney.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Michael Newhouse, the petitioner. I'm an attorney with offices at 80 Main Street here in Wilmington. I'm the petitioner on this article because my client, Dr. Scott Horning, who's here with me this evening, is not a Wilmington resident, but Dr. Horning is here and available for any questions. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, 306 Main Street is located along Main Street as shown in the first aerial photograph that you see before you. And my apologies, by the way, to the folks from the planning board at home. We went old school with our handouts. In any case, 306 Main Street is roughly the halfway point between Wilmington Plaza and what I still refer to as the old Sweetheart Plastic Site, the big industrial building that is behind the railroad tracks near the center. As reflected in the next sheet, 306 Main Street is located at the signalized intersection of Clark Street and Main Street. In that second page of the handout, the property that we're talking about is the White Building, which is used as a dentist's office and has been for at least 50 years, I think actually even longer. Dr. Horning is a practicing dentist, and his father was a dentist at this location starting in the early 1970s when he purchased the property. As reflected in the next page of the handout, which is from the perspective of kind of the driveway of the Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street, which is located next to an office building that I consider to be a medical office building. There's a chiropractor. There's been some dentists there through the years. So on the same side of Main Street as the property, you can see in this photo, a property that currently is occupied by a fence business. Historically, for many years, that was the location of a home fuel oil company. And behind that property is 314 Main Street. That's a commercial office building with, I can't remember how many units, but numerous commercial condominium units. If you're standing on Main Street looking at the dental office behind that, fronting on Clark Street is the only residential abutter. That's 11 Clark Street. And we do not anticipate, based on conversations that Dr. Horning has had with his neighbors, that any of his neighbors, including the nearby residential property owners, we don't expect them to have concerns or objections to this, but certainly if they're in attendance tonight, we'll field any questions they might have. Directly across from Clark Street, it's own neighborhood business, and there's a salon, and that building has been there for roughly 10 to 15 years. That property is zoned for neighborhood business. And then in the next photo, this is from the perspective of the dental office. When you look out to Main Street towards the south, you can see the Dunkin' Donuts is nearby, and next to that, the House of Pizza, and so on. I'm sure that you folks are familiar with that area, but I wanted to make sure we gave you that perspective. The property also has access and egress points on both Main Street and Clark Street, which lends itself to the commercial use that it's been put for, you know, more than 50 years now. Wouldn't be so great for residential use in that location. So that is really the basis for the request at town meeting to rezone from R20 to a general business use. We think it makes sense for this property, as it's been used for that purpose for many years, to be a conforming zoning use. And the last handout, the last page of the handout that we provided, also is intended to give you some sense of the zoning in the vicinity. So you'll notice along the same side of Main Street, running from the Central Business District down to the Market Basket Plaza, all except for a couple of residential properties, are zoned general business, which is the district we're asking to rezone this property to. Same on the stretch across the street, all the way from the Central Business District down to the car dealerships across from the plaza. So all the property in the immediate vicinity is zoned general business, and we think that makes sense. The last item that I would point out is that Dr. Horning and his family, as I'd mentioned, have owned this property for a long time. It's their intention to continue to own it, preferably to lease the property whenever the current occupant and their lease is up. There is the potential at some point, as there always is, to market the property for sale, and we think it makes sense for that to be a conforming zoning use, should that happen at some point in the future as well. So Dr. Horning and myself are available for any questions from the audience or the board. Thank you.
So just one quick, well, a couple of questions, but just right off the bat. So the intent, it sounds like the intent is not anything immediate with, to, as a change?
That is correct.
For this? Okay. And then the land across the street is, across Clark Street, is neighborhood business. It seems to be the only one in that area. Is there, what was your reasoning for looking for a general business versus neighborhood business, seeing as how you sort of abut both?
Well, from, in terms of the size of the property, it's roughly 10,000 square feet, just shy of it. Other than that, it really, it makes sense to have a few more uses for general business. There's, you know, there's nothing contemplated for the building that would really accommodate a use that's much more intense than an office building. So it really was to be consistent. I think that the neighborhood business is more of an aberration from, historically, the fact that it was, seemed to be palatable at the time that that property was rezoned, which, gosh, that was all of 30 years ago, I think more. So I think it's more, it's a function of it being in a general business neighborhood, and I think the neighborhood business for that one lot that was created many decades ago would probably seek to be a general business if it were rezoned today.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions from the board on this one? Anything from the committee? Any public comment? Okay. We'll move on. We are moving on to special town meeting articles. So Article 1, to see if the town will vote to amend, I should have this memorized by now. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning district map of the town of Wilmington as follows, to create a new MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, or take any other action related thereto. Again, I will pass it to Valerie for a presentation.
Thank you. And before I get into this, you're probably wondering, this is the exact same article that was presented at the December special town meeting and the last year's annual town meeting. So it's the same. I tried to add some new things so that it can be still exciting to everyone, so. So first, why are you seeing this again? Why is it back? We do have some new information that folks should consider. Early this year, the Mass SJC ruling came in about the Milton case. The ruling for that was that the MBTA Communities Law is constitutional, and the Attorney General can enforce it. So that was new since the December special town meeting. And the ruling also included a determination that the guidelines that they had created, that the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities created, they weren't properly promulgated, so they said, go back and do the regulations procedure again. So HLC came up with some emergency regulations. Those emergency regulations are in place now, and there's a new deadline in there for towns like ours to comply. And that deadline is July 14th of this year. And really, as we're going through this and town meeting, we'll have to sort of weigh this. The new information is that the AG's office can compel compliance, so, meaning that in the end, they could actually be the ones who are creating the zoning that we are, you know, to make us compliant. So what will need to be weighed is whether this article that was really carefully crafted is something that outweighs the potential of the AG's office kind of creating that zoning for you. So with that in mind, I'm going to go through some background. This is from 2021, and it was signed by Governor Baker, and it includes on 177 MBTA communities, and it requires that each of those communities have an as-of-right multifamily housing zoning district of reasonable size. And just to talk a little bit about zoning, zoning is a set of options that you have for your parcel. So each zone, we just talked about general business, each zone has its allowed list of uses. And I actually use general business as an example. So in general business district, you can do an office, a brew pub, a general service restaurant, retail under 30,000 square feet, or a car wash. Those are all uses that you could do. You hear this term "as-of-right," and that term means that you don't need to go to a board, a body, to see if you can do the use. You can just do it. You can go pull a building permit for it. Other uses, like the car wash, which is in yellow, other uses may be special permit uses. So you go to the Board of Appeals and see if the Board of Appeals will grant you a special permit for that use, which may or may not be appropriate for that parcel. So what we're talking about here is as-of-right multifamily use. You can do it. You don't have to go to a board to see if you can do it. So zoning, they're basically the rules for building size and location and parking and open space, and all of that is reviewed by the planning board through the site plan review process, to make sure that everything is arranged in the way it should be and meets all the requirements. Things like height and setbacks are all reviewed during that process. So again, the requirement for the MBTA communities is that zoning be created, so it's the possibility of multifamily units. It's the option of building those multifamily units. Construction of the units is not required, and it's an additional option for property owners who might be looking to redevelop their parcel. So they could do multifamily, they could do office, there's a whole list of things that they could do. Multifamily would be one of them. So Wilmington's requirement, we have to have 15 acres within the district. Half of the district has to be within a half mile of the train station, and then it has to have a unit capacity of 1248. And I've talked about the 1248 before, but I think I should probably talk about it again. So this 1248 looks big. The state has this monster spreadsheet that they give us to test compliance with the district. So we input all of the information, height, open space requirements, all of it, and it spits out how many units it thinks could go on a parcel. So we have to get the spreadsheet to equal 1248. That spreadsheet assumes that all of the parcels that we're including in the district are like green grass and not developed, right? So it's starting from scratch. It's saying, okay, you have this parcel that you're adding to the district, what could you build there if nothing was there? So that is a very different number than what actually would happen in real life. So our parcels that we're including are not green grass. They're all built on. So for instance, Metro Apartments, that's built out with a three-story multifamily development with a number of units on it. You can't add units to that parcel. So it's not, that spreadsheet's not accounting for that situation. The spreadsheet's also not accounting for soil conditions, for a lack of sewer, and even for how extensive the wetlands truly are. So that spreadsheet is very overly optimistic about how many units you would get in the district. And we'll go through that as we go through the presentation a little bit more. So the process in developing this, the planning board focused on existing multifamily areas and commercial areas and not on single-family neighborhoods. We avoided the groundwater protection district and Floodplain district, which includes special permits. And then there was an online survey back in 2023. That survey helped to guide the board on what areas were sort of most popular in the minds of folks about where this district should be located. It also gave some other hints about where to look at, and we looked at some other different areas, but we came back to actually the areas that were most popular from that survey, which I will go through in a minute. That process also included an economic feasibility study for an affordable component, which we'll go through in the second article. And now getting into the actual proposal, it's an overlay district, so the zoning that's currently there, so if we're talking about Main Street where there's general business zoning, that zone stays there. This proposed zone would be put on top of it as an additional option. So you could do, again, you could do multifamily, or you could do all the things that you can do in general business. So it's an added option as an overlay district. There are three subdistricts within the half mile of the train station. That's the Main Street Mixed-Use Subdistrict, Burlington Ave Subdistrict, Deming Way Subdistrict. And then outside the half mile, we have a West Street Subdistrict, and I'm going to go through each one of those. So starting with West Street outside the half mile, to orient you, at the top of your screen is 129, and the Highway 93 is on the right, and West Street kind of runs down the middle of the screen. Starting up at 100 to 104, that is right behind Mr. Ticket, and it was approved about a year or so ago for a 40B development, so it was approved for multifamily housing already. So that parcel there will be developed as multifamily housing. So we're including that in the district. Show you a picture of what it looks like right there. And I should have mentioned, this district has a three-story height limit, 20-foot setbacks, and two parking spaces per unit, which is our typical parking requirement. And then moving down to 114, West Street is the storage facility. Um, and then moving down to 114, um, West Street is the storage facility. And between those two, there's 108, which is a, a smaller lot, it's less than an acre. It does have some wetlands, um, it does not have sewer, um, so it's a, a smaller piece in that district. And then lastly, Regency Place, which is an existing 40B development with apartments, um, at 121 West Street. So as you can see, this area is already very built, um, and, um, already very much, um, or half of it's multifamily. Um, I'm told that storage facilities are not something that you would tear down to build multifamily, so, um, this, this area would likely not change, um, very much with the addition of this district. And then inside that half-mile, we focused on the Main Street train station. Um, I'm going to go through each of the sub-districts, each of the three, starting with, um, the Burlington Ave sub-district, which is really only the Metro Apartments parcel. So you'll see that where the star is there, the buildings, um, you'll see a wooded piece beside that, um, it looks like more developable land. It's, it's not, in fact, it, it has a conservation restriction on it, so it can't be built on. Um, so what you see in this district is, again, three-story heights, um, 20-foot setbacks, one and a half parking spaces per unit, since it's right near the train. Um, and this is what it looks like today, which is three-story heights, it's already multifamily. Um, so we're crafting this, as you can see, to kind of take credit for the areas that are already multifamily and adding them to this district. Um, where you can build multifamily, there is already multifamily. And then, um, moving on to the Deming Way sub-district, which is the Wilmington Housing Authority, uh, parcel off of Burlington Ave, to the left of the screen. This parcel is already multifamily, um, it does have multifamily units on it. Um, I think there's, um, 69 of them currently existing. And again, that parcel, which is already multifamily, could, um, be developed as multifamily. And three-story heights, 20-foot setbacks, 1.25 parking spaces, we thought we could lower the parking there, um, considering the, the number of, um, um, existing parking spaces per unit was very low, and, um, folks aren't driving as much. And then moving on to the Main Street sub-district, I think this one may be the most confusing, so I'm going to go through it in a couple different ways. But it's, it runs from, you see the train station down at the, the bottom. Um, it runs in between Main Street and the train tracks, and then it runs from the corner of Burlington Ave all the way up to the Hyundai dealership. Um, so there's the Hyundai dealership, um, all these, um, uses in between, um, and I'll give you a, another view of that, um, so it makes a little bit more sense, it's hard to see on this map. But two to three stories of height, I'll explain the range, uh, in another couple slides. 20-foot setbacks, one and a half parking spaces per unit. So since that map is a, a little bit hard to, to distinguish, I thought we should drive down Main Street together, and, um, starting at the top, we're at the Church Street, um, Burlington Ave intersection, and what we're talking about in this, um, in this image, the pointer doesn't work, um, it's the left side of the screen. So the train station side of the screen is included in the district, the right side with classic upholstery, not in the district. Right? So then, in the second photo, we're moving further down Main Street, the right side is the train station, that's included, the, the, I'm sorry, the left side is included, the train station, the right side with Wilson Wolf, not included in the district. As an aside, you can already do multifamily on the right side in these pictures, um, just hasn't been done yet. Moving further down, um, it does include EJs on the left side, it does not include the gas station on the right. Um, so again, we're, we're going down Main Street and everything to the left between the, between Main Street and the train tracks, so Sunrise Market, um, we're going to keep going, Dunkin' Donuts, the Chiropractor, House of Pizza, Mayneke, Enterprise, um, and down to Dollar General, Summarts, um, Speedway, and then finally, the Hyundai dealership. Um, that is the extent of the district, nothing on the right side is included. So, and, and a note for you all, um, the Hyundai dealership parcel was recently sold to the car dealership, um, they're redeveloping that parcel as a new car dealership for Hyundai, so it will not be multifamily. That's the largest parcel in this sub-district that could have been multifamily, it's not going to be multifamily, it's going to be a new, um, renovated car dealership. Um, another view of this, kind of from the air, um, just to give as many views as possible, but the train station down at the bottom, and showing sort of the buildings in between the, in between Main Street and the tracks and the uses that, that go with them. Um, you see Clark Street at the top, um, nothing on the right side of Main Street. And then further up the, the road, you see Clark Street at the bottom, and again, Enterprise all the way up to the Hyundai dealership. And all of the uses in between. So I, I said I would explain the, the two to three-story height range. Main Street was really envisioned to be a, a mixed-use district, um, and kind of have a traditional Main Street type of, of setup. So we wanted to incentivize having ground floor commercial uses, um, with residential up top, just like a, a typical, you know, what you see in maybe Redding or, um, other downtowns. So the allowance for height, um, if you're doing just residential, you only get two stories of height. But if you're doing a ground floor commercial use, um, you get that story for free, you can do two, um, residential stories above it. So you get a three-story building if, if you're doing the mixed-use development with an active ground floor. And the idea is there to create an active Main Street that's walkable and, um, pleasant for folks to hang out on with cafes and things like that. Some other notes on, on the Main Street district, um, three stories is already the allowed height on Main Street for, for the uses that are allowed there. Residential, like I said, is already allowed on the right side of the street. It hasn't happened yet, which is sort of the, the point of zoning doesn't equal immediate change, just because it's allowed doesn't mean it, it happens. Property owners do not have to build residential. And, um, again, mixed use envisioned for Main Street in the town's master plan, and this, um, this zoning, if there is multifamily built on Main Street, it would provide, um, other types of units other than single-family units for, you know, folks who are young professionals starting out, um, those who want to downside, downsize and sell their single-family home. So it would give of, a, a different kind of housing option in town for folks who want to stay in town. And, um, other things that we included in the district were streetscape design requirements to optimize the pedestrian experience, um, make sure that it's walkable and oriented towards the street, so you have cafes at the street that, and sidewalk cafes, um, keep the parking on the side and the rear, and, um, have an active streetscape. So I, I talked about the 1248 and that it's not, um, it's not realistic, it's what the spreadsheet needs to say. If I were to guess about being realistic, um, and we assume the following things, that Deming Way, the Wilmington Housing Authority parcel stays the same, um, Metro Apartments stays the same, Regency Place on West Street stays the same, 100 West Street is built as it's permitted, the storage facility isn't torn down to, to be turned into multifamily, and the Hyundai dealership is now not going to be multifamily. What are we looking at for possible development? Well, what the, the spreadsheet even says is that, um, there's a potential for probably less than a dozen units at 108 West Street because it has wetlands, it doesn't have sewer, so 12 is really not, um, going to be the number there. And then for the rest of Main Street, um, it's less than 177 units that are possible over time. Um, and what I'm told from, um, several developers now that have, have talked to me about the zoning is that the market really isn't there right now for, um, someone to, um, buy one of those Main Street parcels and turn it into, uh, multifamily housing. So it would be something that would happen over time, um, and those are some of the uses on Main Street. So realistically, it's less than 200 units that, that would likely be built over time. And, um, compliance, um, so we have a new deadline of July 14th to be in compliance. This is an updated map, 119 communities have adopted zoning to comply, um, so that's kind of the status on that part. We'll talk about benefits of compliance. At one point, there was talk about reducing capital funding for the housing authorities. Um, if we're in compliance, we don't have to even talk about that risk. There are grant funding impacts that would, um, um, that we would be subject to, um, because the town does receive millions, uh, millions of dollars in grant funding. And going through some of those, um, we'd continue to be eligible for grants like the Mass Works grant. We got $3.89 million, um, in, I think it was 2021, to reconstruct, um, the, um, Lubbersbrook culvert at Route 62, so this is right at Eli's, I think you probably remember some of the road closures there, um, and a sewer extension. So that was all funded with Mass Works grant money. And we do have a, another culvert in town that, um, needs to be replaced, and we got $321,000 in a, an MVP grant to do the design for the Martins Brook culvert. That's the culvert, um, if you're heading towards North Redding on 62, right before you get to Shea and the new warehouse, there's a kind of a dip in the road, it goes low, um, there's a culvert there that, um, needs to be replaced in the near term. If we're in compliance, we're, we're then eligible for construction funding from the MVP, MVP program, which is up to $3 million. Um, other discretionary funding has been talked about in decision-making, um, having to do with compliance. Some of the other funding we get is water and sewer grants. Um, we get a lot of funding for transportation projects through the, the state process. Um, we got $5.6 million in state and federal funding for the Lowell Woburn Street intersection. We need to next look at the West Street, um, Lowell Street intersection, and, um, and the idea would be to do the same thing for that intersection with, um, state and federal funding. They have said that compliance with this will impact those decisions, um, as it's discretionary. Um, so schools, roads, and bridges have been talked about being, um, funding being impacted. So, um, benefits of compliance, um, and this proposal was, was really carefully crafted to, um, to be limited amount of change, um, and taking credit for the multifamily that already exists in town. Um, so, that's, the other thing is that where there could be some development, um, it was carefully located, um, along Main Street where it was envisioned to be a mixed-use. And, um, the benefit is, um, is that Wilmington voters could, um, enact this carefully crafted, um, article and, um, avoid, um, others, you know, drawing that line for you. So, um, something to consider, um, at town meeting. And that's, that's what I had.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does the board have any comments, questions on the article? In the committee?
Could you please explain the affordability, um, in these units? There's a lot of talk on social media that they don't like the project because it doesn't include affordable units.
Sure. Um, I was saving that for the next article, that's why I didn't mention it. No, that's okay, I can get to it before that. Um, so there was no requirement to do anything affordable in the zoning, um, but we, we can choose to. So what's being proposed, um, for this is, um, should I just go into the presentation?
The Article II presentation?
Yeah. I'll wait. Basically.
I can withdraw my question, and you can just go on. Why don't I do that?
I will answer that in the next article.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the committee? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment, and, uh, just remind everybody that, uh, we'd have a three-minute limit that we set at the beginning of the meeting, and we'll continue to stick to that, please.
Hi, good evening, Frank West, to Birchwood Road. Uh, for disclosure purposes, I am a member of the Select Board, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Uh, first of all, I think, conceptually, I think that this is the best of a bad situation. I applaud the planning board, especially Valerie, anyone that worked in this, that, again, it's a state, you know, they're, they're trying to force it down as a state mandate, we can vote yes, we can vote no. Again, I think that this is the best of a bad situation. Personally, I'm going to vote no at town meeting for this, and it has nothing to do with the work that everyone here has done, people in back of me have done, and other entities around. Couple of things, one, I'll just, I'll talk real quick about affordability. It's, you know, we, there's a 15% proposal that Valerie will talk about in a few minutes, but to give you an idea what the real numbers are, as stated at town meeting, for example, on the Cross Street project, two-bedroom units were $2,900, the affordable units are $2,900 for a two-bedroom, one-bedroom is $2,495. So that gives you an idea of, you know, they're labeled, quote, affordable, but, you know, realistically, you know, can our kids, for example, afford that? The other thing is, is that going along Main Street, you got to remember, the businesses that are there are not necessarily owned, the properties are not necessarily owned by those businesses. So if, for example, like, you know, there was a, there was a, a rendering of Wilmington House, if Wilmington, if, if all of a sudden the owner of Wilmington House sold out for a condo comp, uh, for an apartment complex, whatever, they're not going to sit back, wait two or three years for our construction, and then those owners will come back three years later as Wilmington House Pizza. Those businesses will be gone. You know, some of them, you know, people may say, gee, I can't wait for them to be gone, I don't know, but that's okay. The other thing also is, is that, for example, the, um, the car dealership, that was sold for $2.75 million. If you, you know, it was brought up that there's 88 units that theoretically could be built there. If you do 88 times $600,000, probably a, an average price if they were being sold, it comes up to $56 million. So I'm just thinking that, you know, is, is something like the car dealership going to say, you know what, I'm going to sell my cars, make a couple of grand a car? Or can I make 20, 30 million dollars by, by selling out and having a condo complex built there? Again, we don't know. The last thing that I'll just say is, is that, again, that they're looking for 1,248 units a state by this proposal, and we're realistically thinking that, you know, 300 or so, maybe 400 units get built. What happens if the state says, where's my other 900 units? Are they going to say, town? You know, you dropped, you drew up this basic plan, that's, there's this great plan that included like, things like the MBTA parking lot and stuff that, you know, realistically probably will never get developed. But you know what? We're in a, quote, housing crisis, or whatever they want to call it. I personally don't believe that, I think we're in an affordable housing crisis, not a housing crisis, but what if this, what if we do this and the town comes in and says, the city comes in and says, where's my eight, now you have the 800, 900 units? And they come to us and say, you know what, we're going to, we're going to direct you that this zoning and this zoning now becomes multifamily. So I think I'm past my three minutes, thank you very much. Again, my opinion, Valerie, great job, you made the best of a bad situation. I'm not knocking the, I'm not knocking your work in the proposal, and I said that to you many times, but I think that this proposal as written, I think, is bad for the town of Wilmington, and we should vote no.
Good evening, Kevin McDonald. Just a question for the planning board. As the planning board requested the Select Board to have an agenda item to take a vote You have not?
No.
Okay. At the special town meeting, I pretty much laid out a blueprint, maybe not perfect, but it was a blueprint for an exemption. I've also requested the board to have an agenda item. They even, at some past meetings, talked about some discussions in the state legislature that an exemption was possible. However, if you never request the legislature to provide an exemption, you never get it. And so I think that's probably wrong for the board not to at least ask our Select Board for an agenda item. I don't really think that they'll have one because I don't think they're smart enough to have one. But, you know, when it comes to looking at the cost of funding losses and that sort of thing, and the possibility that an exemption does exist, if we take the right means to do it, then I think it's a benefit for the town. With regard to the dealership, I have been in various cities where I have seen dealerships on the front row of apartment buildings. So I'm not sure I can agree with you, Valerie, that the Hyundai dealership could never be developed into units above it. With regard to the other areas along Route 38, I just don't think it's a desirable area for residential development to have train tracks in the backyard and Route 38 in the front yard, being able to get onto Route 38. And, you know, kids, what are kids going to play in the tracks? It just doesn't make sense to me. I heard you mention tonight about the realistic numbers. If the state actually decides to come and review this tape, what they're going to say is, you're trying to circumvent our desire and our plan to actually provide housing. And they're going to see that the town hasn't really performed due diligence to actually provide for this amount of housing. And even though I disagree with Mr. West concerning that this is the best of a bad situation, I do agree with him that the state could come in and lay the hammer down on the town. If Mr. West really thought a little deeply about the best of a bad situation, he would bring up at a Select Board meeting, a request for an agenda item to actually take some action to, whether it's a home rule petition, article at town meeting, or special town meeting. The board could, the board closed the warrant, so I think that's a possibility that they could reopen the warrants for this town meeting. But I doubt that they'll do that because they're not that smart.
All right. Mr. McDonald, you've gone to be up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, Frank West, two Birchwood Road, member of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Select Board. I did want to say, only because Mr. McDonald asked about talking about agenda items, I did mention an agenda item. And basically what happened is, is that, as you know, the state auditor came in and said that this is an unfunded mandate. So what I did was, is that I did ask the board to have an agenda item to discuss the possibility of, because it's an unfunded mandate, going to the state, you know, maybe going like some of the, and considering like some of these other towns, going to Superior Court and asking for an exemption. But I have thought this long and deep, and that's what I did as a member of this board. Thank you.
Since my name was mentioned, I just want to ask Mr. West about how long ago that you asked for an agenda item.
We're not asking people in the, in the audience.
We're not? Do you know what the answer to that is?
I don't.
Do you know how long it's been since Mr. West asked?
Before you could ask the question to a member of the audience, so.
Okay, I'm asking you, though.
No, you've had, you've had your turn to speak. Thank you.
Rondi Holland, 28 Glen Road, former member of the planning board. If I recall correctly, when I was on the planning board, that we went to the state with our plan, and it was asked of us to correct it before we even brought it to town meeting. And we have corrected it, if I'm, if I remember correctly. But can you tell, Valerie, could you tell us how many existing units we have that we're taking advantage of with this district that already exists as multifamily housing, that meet part of the 1,248, or whatever the number is, criteria that the state is looking for in our multifamily zoning districts?
I don't have that number, but.
I would just suggest when we go before town meeting, for the special town meeting, you have that number.
Sure.
Because you're just saying 177 additional, plus 12 additional can be created. But we already have a certain number that exists.
We do. I think it's probably around 400. It doesn't exactly equate because what the spreadsheet says that you can build on a parcel is different than what's on some of our parcels, right? Because like for Regency Place on West Street, the spreadsheet says that you can do a lot more units on the parcel because the spreadsheet doesn't know that there are more wetlands, that it doesn't have sewer. So it's making assumptions about that parcel that it doesn't know all the information for. So what's built on that parcel is, I think it's 120 units, but the spreadsheet says, you know, more than that. So it's not a one-for-one, but I can certainly have the number of, of units that we have in the district.
But as I recall, this did go to the state for approval as a plan, and it was approved.
It did. We had it pre-reviewed, pre-adoption review, and there were little things that we had to tweak, and we did those things to, to make it comply. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That was ahead of last year's.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Good evening. Garrett Palma, 46 Wayne Road. Just a couple of questions. One is, why wasn't Princeton Properties put in, into an area that we would be developing for the MBTA?
Sure. So we did, that, that was one of the areas that was on the survey in 2023, and we did look at that area. It's a little different than Main Street because very quickly, at that train station, very quickly you get into single-family neighborhoods as you kind of expand that. And there were also more sensitive resource areas in that, in that area with Lubbersbrook running through it and Riverfront and Flood Plain and all of those things. So because of the resource areas, because you quickly got into single-family neighborhoods, and the Princeton parcel specifically has sort of an upland island in the back that you don't see from, from Middle Six Ave, that is technically developable land, but I don't think anyone would want to see that developed because you have to cross wetlands, and it would be interesting, I guess. So because of.
And expensive.
And expensive. Because of all of those reasons, and because Main Street was more popular on the survey, we stuck to Main Street.
And as far as the 1,246 or 48, the state has approved the design that you have presented to them, correct?
Yeah, we got the pre-adoption review, and they flagged some minor things, but other than that, they had approved it, yes.
Okay. And with the understanding that X amount of units would be put, or could be put in this area?
Correct. Yeah, they, they saw what we were proposing, yes.
Because one thing I have concern with is what Mr. West has also said. When they're saying 1,246, and we're talking in the area of let's round it out to 400, are they going to come back to us later on and just say, here, here, and here, Bill, you have no choice? Where they mandated, you know, I know you say they've put it into a, a system, and the system has popped out what we should be building. And we, the way I look at it right now is we're nowhere near that number. But is, my, one of my concerns is that they will come back to us at a later date, especially the way they're treating, the way they're treating all the towns and cities that they're mandating this on, and say, well, okay, that's fine, that's 400, where's the, where's the rest of them going? And the other thing, too, is, has, has anybody, and I'll leave this to our legal counsel if he wants to answer it, where these are unfunded mandates correctly right now? And that's it. Thank you.
Shh. Yeah. Okay. For the first one, so the requirement has nothing to do with construction. We, no one has to build any housing units for us to comply. It's, the requirement is that the housing units are allowed, right? So just because they're allowed, like the other side of Main Street with Wilson Wolf, you could build housing there right now. It's allowed. No one's done it. It, so, but if we create a zoning district that allows multifamily and nothing gets built, we still comply. So it's, it's not about construction, it's not about creating, it's, it's about the possibility of units. And that possibility could be over many decades, right? So there may not be any change in the next 10 years. Maybe it takes, you know, a few decades to see places like House of Pizza or those things turn over. Doesn't matter. You could build nothing, and we still comply.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on Mr. McDonald? We've already had a chance to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you if, if the town decided to like eliminate train stations and not even have to deal with the MBTA, has the town looked at that since we're paying, I think it's around, the last time I checked was like $557,000 to the MBTA, and they partially were responsible for a lady dying. So have you, have you done any types of surveys to see how many Wilmington people?
Stop asking your question, please.
I'm just asking you if you had a survey to see how many Wilmington.
You've had your chance to speak.
I'm just asking if you did a survey on how many people take the train from Wilmington. The answer is probably no.
Okay. We'll move on to Article II. Article II, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to delete the current inclusionary zoning section 6.11, or 6.11 in its entirety, and replace it with a new section 6.11, or to take any other action related thereto. This article adds the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District to the existing section 6.11 Inclusionary Housing so that affordable housing units are required with development in the MOD. Again, for the last time, I'll ask Valerie to jump in.
Thank you. So this article, we have an inclusionary housing bylaw that requires 15% affordable units when multifamily housing is constructed. And a couple of examples, on Cross Street, the building that, that's being built there will have three affordable units. 168 Lowell Street, Rachel's Village, had five affordable units. And that was our local zoning requiring 15% of the units be affordable. We, we don't have to have the discussion about affordable. It's, it, it is a certain level of affordability that is not affordable for everyone, but it is less than market rate and important to, you know, some folks it is affordable for. So it's, it's important to, to include these below-market rates, below-market units for folks starting out, downsizing, et cetera. This article would add, like the chair mentioned, would add the new district, if it's created, would add that district to this bylaw so that any, if multifamily housing is built, 15% of it would be affordable. So it adds it to the list of districts. And we are, so per the, the regulations, we're allowed to do 10% affordable as a requirement with no questions asked. If you go beyond that, above that, you have to do an independent economic feasibility analysis. We did get grant funding from the state to do that economic feasibility analysis, and that showed that our existing 15% affordable requirement for multifamily housing is economic. It's supported by the market. So that's what's being proposed, is that 15% affordable. And then we wrote in, if for some reason, HLC doesn't approve the 15%, our fallback is the 10% requirement that we're allowed to do without any questions asked. So hopefully that adds some information. There is an affordability requirement to any new housing built within that district if this article passes.
Okay. Thanks. Are there any questions from the board, comments from the board? Or the committee?
Is there a question?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Any public comment on Article II?
Thank you. Regarding the economic feasibility analysis, can you tell us what components of that analysis this feasibility study is predicated on?
I can get you a copy of it, and it is on our website on the, the page for MBTA Communities. I couldn't possibly tell you everything that's in it. A firm, a very well-known economic firm, RKG, did the study, and it was based on the regional market. But I can certainly get you a copy.
But when you're saying the regional, regional market, is it people's median income? Is it amount of affordable houses in town? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
No. Again, the, the, it's available on the, on the website, as she mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of information in there. Any other public comment on Article II? Okay. Seeing none, that will conclude the zoning articles portion of the warrant, and the planning board will reconvene in Room 9 to discuss recommendations for the zoning articles discussed tonight. And I'll turn the meeting back over to Ms. Maganelli.
Thank you very much.
The finance committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This article basically is to report to the town the results of the election for the Select Board, School Committee, Housing Authority, and Shawshank Tech School Committee. Article II is to hear reports of committees and act thereon. Mr. Slager, do we have any committee reports?
So at this time, we don't have any formal committee reports. However, I do anticipate at least one committee report being submitted for this, which I believe would be the Wildwood School Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Article III, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years, or take any other action related thereto. Do we have any unpaid bills?
Not at this time. I don't anticipate any before the time meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Article IV, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer-collector with the approval of the Select Board to enter into an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws, with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2026 for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to main funds on deposit with such institutions, and return to said institutions providing banking services, or take any other action related thereto.
Regarding this article.
Would you kindly state your name, please?
Kevin McDonald. It hasn't changed. Can you tell us the banks that the town does do business with, that where the deposits are?
I do not have that information with me at the time.
Okay. Probably just a wild guess of like one bank that the town does business with. Probably just a wild guess of like one bank that the town does business with.
I do not know that information.
Uh, 'cause I put in a public record request, uh, for some banks that the town does business with, and I noticed one bank had like about $90 million in deposits. And I just had a question relative to security of that money. I guess it arose from the assumption that the FDIC only insures accounts up to 250,000? So can you speak to us a little bit about, um, the security of funds, who provides the security or insurance and that sort of thing?
No, I cannot.
Can somebody here?
That, that is a question that would be better addressed to the treasurer-collector.
Is the treasurer-collector here?
I do not know. Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I just, um, I, I would have thought that our town council would have been able to read this article and see that it's a banking article, and the comments or questions related to a banking article would be pretty much, would be pretty much in line. I mean, we just got finished asking a bunch of questions to the planning board, now you're telling us that we can't ask questions when it involves like banking and security of funds? Uh, kinda sounds like you're trying to cover up for the banks. I mean, I think that would be a legitimate question to have answered, but obviously, this board doesn't have any answers. And I can just share with the rest of the people that I was at a recent finance committee meeting, and I asked a simple question. Can you tell us the name of the auditing company? And none of you are, were able to answer the name of the auditing company, and I don't think anybody has ever read an auditing report, which is very concerning, and to me, it's a disservice to the people of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you. Article Five, to see how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town officers and departments, and determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto. This is basically the budget. Mr. Slagel, did you have a presentation?
I did, if that's okay with the, with the board, yes. So thank you very much for everybody coming tonight. Uh, I did want to give a, a very short presentation, I'll try to keep it brief, regarding this year's budget. I'll also touch on, uh, the capital plan very briefly in this, because it's part of the presentation, but that will, that will be our, our next article as well. Uh, so this is the budget for fiscal year 2026. Uh, and I wanted to provide both the, the finance committee and the public with some of the background and, and to how the budget was built, just so people know kind of the thought process that went, but from the administration. So the, the pillars that we built this budget on are, are, are four. Number one, we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining appropriate staffing levels for the town departments while continuing a fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible budget. The second pillar, um, uh, to support our public safety staff and police, fire, and the public works department. Our third pillar was to work to renovate and update our municipal buildings and infrastructure. Uh, and the fourth pillar was to plan for a safe, modern educational experience for Wilmington schoolchildren. So though, before we sat down with numbers, these are the kind of thought processes that entered into the administration's, um, uh, delving into the FY26 budget. The budget by the numbers. So the, these are the numbers for the FY25 and FY26 budgets, uh, broken down annually. Um, the, at the top line, you can see the non-capital budget, so basically the operating budget for salaries and, and regular expenses for the town. In FY25, that was 133,057,972 dollars. For FY26, it's 140,021,937 dollars. So that change roughly is a 4.82% increase year over year. Uh, those are primarily driven by, um, uh, contracted salary increases, uh, and, and some other increases that we'll talk about later in the, in the presentation. Uh, the keys in the next two lines are, um, the, the robust capital expenses that we're proposing in this budget. Uh, the first is, we put in an additional line for additional capital stabilization in FY25, and for several years prior to that, the capital stabilization account was funded at a tune of $1 million. Uh, for next year, we're proposing to, to, uh, send $3 million to our capital stabilization fund. And, um, in FY25, we had a very light capital, uh, capital plan, so the capital plan in its entirety was about 2.4 million. We're proposing slightly over an $11 million capital plan. So the overall budget numbers are driven by a robust in, uh, uh, increase in our investment in capital in the town. It's driven by a couple of specific projects, which we'll talk about in a minute. There are some factors impacting the budget. Now, these factors are impacting that 4.82% in the non-capital budget. Number one, uh, non-union colas from FY25 and 26. I've explained that to the, the, the finance committee, but in short, because of the, uh, the, uh, place that the administration founded in negotiations, um, with unions at the time of preparing for the budget last year, um, colas for non-union, uh, employees were not included in FY, in all the FY25 budgets. Therefore, there was a catch-up this year. We had the colas from FY25, but we have already determined the cola for FY26, so the, both of those colas are included in this budget. We had an increase in our general liability insurance. Now, as everyone knows, um, uh, increases in insurance are, uh, derived by their kind of the, the data that the insurers are putting together based on the past history. This year, our general liability insurance increased approximately 10%. Increases in health insurance. This year, uh, we budgeted for an increase in health insurance of 8%. We don't have those final numbers yet. My hope is, we'll get a number that's lower than that, but, um, uh, the 8% is actually on the low side for municipalities. Lots of municipalities are seeing the double-digit increases for health insurance. So we're in a good place with that, but it is a driver of an increase in the budget line. And then an increase in contractual and other services, I'll talk about a couple of them, uh, later in the, in the, uh, presentation, but we did some significant, uh, uh, contracts that, um, uh, increased higher than kind of our, our, our normal expected increases. Uh, so, uh, this is some highlights of the changes that you're gonna find in this budget. Staffing increases. Uh, we increased, uh, the FTEs by four. Uh, the first was a, one senior clerk position that's added in the town clerk's office. Uh, the reasoning for that was the need to assist with the public records requests and digitization of town records. We, uh, increased the IT department by one technician. Uh, the reasoning for that was the need to assist in munis and provide depth to the IT department's, uh, overall surfacing of the town. Uh, and then public buildings were increased, uh, two positions. One was a G2 custodian, which is a, a lower-level custodian position. Uh, the reasoning for that was the need to cover the additional square footage in the new senior center and the new town hall. We're moving from certain-sized facilities to larger facilities. Um, the public buildings has a formula, um, that they've operated on for how many, uh, how much personnel is needed per square foot, uh, to, to make sure that we're, um, keeping those facilities, uh, properly, uh, cleaned. And so that additional square footage needed one, uh, a, a lower-level custodian position. And also, they added one painter. Uh, the reasoning for the painter was the, to, to take steps to proactively paint the town's over 900,000 square feet of space. So as, as folks I'm sure are aware, um, you know, we, we have a lot of buildings that are vintage, um, and one of the ways that we, uh, uh, work to maintain those buildings is to proactively paint. Uh, this position was formerly in the public buildings department, but dropped out of the budget several years ago. After long conversations with, with, uh, uh, the head of public buildings, Dennis Kelly, we made the determination that we need to have a dedicated person who's doing this sort of painting, instead of just relying on crews to do it as kind of their secondary job when they're not doing their primary position. Some of the other drivers for these budget increases are contractual changes. So we, uh, went out for a new town trash contract. Um, this was publicly bid out. We had three, uh, firms that responded. Uh, the low bidder, uh, had a significant increase of about $316,000, which is over 12% increase. That's the low bidder. The, the other two bidders were significantly higher than that. So we maintained our contract with Casella, which was the low bidder, but that was a significant driver in the budget. The soft write financial software, um, this is actually a driver in the positive direction, because of work that was done by, uh, John and his IT department, along with Stephanie and, and the accountant's office. The stage that we are in munis implementation allowed us to, to reduce our, uh, soft write bill, um, uh, $38,000, which is a significant drop in that. And then we had some other changes. Uh, the heating systems in the new buildings are coming online, so, um, it's gonna, uh, increase the electrics, uh, bills for our town buildings, but it's gonna be a drop in our fuel heating expenses, and I got some news, hopefully we can drop those fuel heating expenses a little bit more if Dennis is right. So, um, uh, those were some significant drivers. While we're talking about this, I did want to talk, uh, about some of the capital improvement, um, plan highlights, especially to drive, um, the, 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 uh, the delta between last year's capital plan and this year's capital plan. Uh, the first and, and most prominent is the North Wilmington Fire Substation. As we, when we talk about the capital plan in the next article, I will have a, kind of a longer conversation about the North Wilmington Fire Substation in a, a separate presentation, but that, uh, $3.5 million in the capital plan that's coming from free cash was a significant driver in that delta. Um, the second is the window replacement at the West Intermediate School. This is a project that has been on hold for a couple of years, but is desperately needed at the school. That's $2.75 million, and that is also coming from a non-general fund source. We're taking that from the overlay, from the assessor, uh, yeah, from the assessor's office for their overlay, uh, account. I want to give a lot of credit to the assessor. For those folks who don't know, the overlay account is, um, uh, funding that we put in every year to cover for, uh, abatements that may get processed, um, uh, and, uh, appellate tax board cases that the town may come out on the non-winning side of. So funds are put into that overlay every year. Because of the way, the excellent way that our assessor does business, um, we've developed a, a, a significant, uh, uh, balance in that account, uh, and such that the, um, the Board of Assessors, uh, uh, felt, uh, uh, they could release $2.75 million back to the general, back to the town to allow us to fund this project. Uh, there is a fire department pumper, uh, at almost a million dollars. That's a significant driver. Um, that's also being paid for out of free cash. As folks know, because of the, the timing delays on some of the orders for these, uh, capital equipment, we have to order them four or five years before we think we're gonna need them. Uh, so it's one of the reasons why we wanted to get this pumper onto this, uh, onto this capital plan. A fourth is the Wilmington High School turf field replacement. Uh, that had been engineered in prior year, and, um, uh, there was a placeholder for, uh, around a million dollars in this year's capital plan. Uh, we got lucky in that the cost came in as, as less than, than, um, than we had planned for, and so, uh, we're gonna be funding that turf field replacement. There are also a couple of items that aren't being funded by the general fund budget, but they are, uh, significant. They're gonna be show up later in your, uh, in our, uh, discussion of the, the warrant articles. Uh, the Industrial Way pump station, uh, by the sewer department, it's about a $1.2 million. It's gonna be covered by sewer revenues. And then, um, the Route 38 water main replacement, uh, at about $5.5 million, covered, covered by water revenues. Then we, as I mentioned earlier, we did fund, uh, additional $2 million towards capital stabilization with the thought that we would have that funding available if the town determined that they wanted to use that towards the, um, uh, the new elementary school project. Um, I, I did want to speak a little bit about, uh, our long-term building plan. So this is one of the kind of fundamental things that we've been talking about, um, that led to the capital plan that you saw before you and our budget. And there's a couple of key things that I think I want to make clear to the public at large. So Wilmington is in the business of education. So we need to provide schools to our residents going forward. We also need to plan for our municipal building needs for the next generations. Um, that includes, you know, buildings for all departments. This can be accomplished while respecting the tax concerns of our citizens, and that's really the crucial point. Our citizens want to know that we are doing, being the most reasonable and responsible with their tax dollar, and I believe we can do that. And so though we're gonna need a debt exclusion for the proposed pre-K through five elementary school at the north, with proper timing and help of the MSBA, we can build a second pre-K through five elementary school within our budget without the need for an additional debt exclusion or an override. I think that's really key to get out to folks now, as we're talking about this budget and thinking about, um, uh, funding for projects going into the future. This will allow us to update our municipal infrastructure using our excellent bond rating and free cash. So if we have a plan for schools, and folks know that we have a plan for schools, and we've laid out that plan for schools, then hopefully, folks will be comfortable saying that we can move forward using, you know, our, our excellent free cash position and our bond rating to be able to do things like a North Wilmington Fire Substation, like a DPW barn, like, you know, potential upgrades to the library, or the public safety building at some point, or the public buildings building. And so those are the thought processes behind that. To speak more specifically about schools, um, we have the proposed pre-K through five at the north site. Um, as, as folks know, we're, we have a special town meeting, um, uh, that's scheduled for, uh, December 13th, and a ballot question, I'm sorry, September 13th, and a ballot question for September 16th, uh, late in the summer, um, to, to, for a, a debt exclusion to pay for that school. The question that everyone asked, and anybody who's on the school building committee knows that this is the first question you get asked, is what about the other side of town? If we duplicated that project, that is, did a second pre-K through five, whether it's a renovation in addition, or a new building on the other side of town, um, in the tax levy of 2036, we have the ability, um, to absorb a large amount of, of, uh, uh, capital payments because our pension, um, our outstanding pension liability will be paid off. And that creates a one-time opportunity for the town to absorb a large amount of, 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 uh, a, a building project like a large school like this. That is also, in 2036, the time when the high school debt is coming off the tax rolls, so that, by that point, it'll be about 1.5 million, and that rolls off in 2036. And then, as I've talked about before, we look a little bit into the future. Uh, we did a middle school, um, uh, around 2000. It means around 2050, we need to start thinking about redoing the middle school, in all likelihood. If we do this project, the debt for the current elementary school will be rolling off the books in 2056. We kind of have a plan to have the middle school re, renovated or constructed in 2036 when that debt rolls off. Likewise, um, we did a high school, uh, back in 2013. Sometime in the 20, early 2060s, we're gonna be need to thinking about doing something with the high school. If we do have the second elementary school in our, in our, uh, budget, paying that note off, that would be paid off in 2066. So that rolls into the, just about the timeline that the high school would need to have, you know, a, a renovation. And, and, and hopefully, this sort of, uh, thought process will allow folks to know that we are thinking about the future, and we have a plan for when things are gonna happen, and we're not just flying by the seat of our pants. On the town side, um, we're talking about the North Wilmington Fire Substation. So the $3.5 million, uh, is kind of the second piece. The first piece was put in the capital plan last year, uh, when this, uh, I think it was $650,000 was set aside for the feasibility study, architectural and, and engineering for that substation. So we're making our, our, uh, $3.5 million first payment, uh, out of free cash towards that substation in this capital plan. Uh, in all likelihood, we'll be, be working with Public Works to have a feasibility study for a new DPW barn in 2028 or 2029. And then a feasibility study on a library renovation in 2031, 2032. Obviously, these are, you know, in the future, and we have time to adjust those plans, depending on how our free cash situation looks and what our bond rating looks like, but this is the general plan for the long-term building for the town. I thought that was important for folks to know as we're, as we're thinking about our significant capital plan this year and our budget. So in conclusion, um, the, 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 the non- So in conclusion, the, the, the non-capital portion of our budget is a less than 5% increase. I'm very happy with that. We are doing a robust capital plan, but we have the funds to pay for it, both for free cash and from the overlay. And I'm very proud to put this budget in front of the town come May. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can any of this be sustained, these budgets? This is all about spending. How about raising the money? We are facing declining commercial property values. It's kind of a statewide issue with kind of Boston sort of leading the way as, as being a problem. How can this be sustained without putting more of a burden on the individual taxpayer who's already facing a big burden with the increasing property values? I write the tax bills every quarter, and they're not getting smaller. So how is this spending going to be sustained over all these years? Is it basically what I want to know without burdening the taxpayers even more, which you want a debt exclusion for a new school? Well, school enrollments have declined over the years. The statistics on the website say the average class size is nine to 10 people. Why are we spending all this money? And is it a way to level fund these budgets for a while?
Thank you. Anybody else?
So is anybody can answer that question?
I'll answer it. It's, it's not sustainable, and they don't care because forcing people out of town is not something they care about. When I was looking at the manager's presentation, I saw a 12.46% increase in the budget. Proposition two and a half was put in place to probably put some restrictions so that people can actually afford to live. People who are expecting a pay raise, they, they're not getting a pay raise of 12.4% every year. It's disturbing to see that we're talking about building a new high school, building a new middle school. And I've been to New Haven around the Yale University buildings that are hundreds of years old, Harvard. I've even been to New Jersey and Princeton and saw some of them buildings. Actually even be thinking that we got to reconstruct the high school after just paying $85 million is just preposterous. I did want to point out the West Intermediate windows. If you recall, it was $2.75 million to replace the West Intermediate windows. Okay, so you take that school and you look at the North Intermediate that had the windows replaced, that had the roof replaced, that had the kitchen done, had parking paved, and now they want to knock that building down. Unbelievable. I talked to people who work in the building. I talked to the people who maintain the building, and they say it's one of our best schools in the whole town. The manager said that the town is in the business of education. If the town's in the business of education, we need to understand that buildings don't educate students, but rather teachers do. And we need to recruit the best teachers and pay them accordingly. And as I read some of our local social media websites and I see the amount of positions opening up in our school systems, it just makes me scratch my head like, why are people leaving our town? Why, why is there such turnover in our school system? And it, you know, seems to be a problem. I'll also point that the manager mentioned that we're going to be paying $5.5 million to install water lines. It'll be going out for bid to a private company. And it's disturbing to me, and I think there should be some questions raised, why we have a water department that can't even install water lines? Why? Why, why is that? And lastly, regarding the general liability insurance, maybe the manager could answer this, because I've been hearing some talk in town that we have a legal counsel that's hired by the town to handle the legal matters of the town. But then, legal matters are being sent to the insurance company for their lawyers to handle it. And what's resulting in that is that our premiums are going sky high, because as you know, insurance companies don't want to lose money, and they certainly don't want to lose money paying for attorneys. So can the manager answer the question?
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald.
Why is our town council not handling?
We're moving along to Article 6.
Can he answer the question, please?
To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,79,000 from overlay surplus to a sum of $2,750,000 and raise and appropriate the sum of $2,218,555 as designated for the following purposes. So we have a chart here of all of our capital, most of our capital items, I believe, and there's 36 items. If anybody has a comment on any particular item, Mr. Slagel.
Thank you. I did want to, as I mentioned, just do a real brief, and I apologize, this is, I promise this is a real brief, a brief discussion of the North Wilmington Fire Substation. The largest capital item, as you'll note on here, is the $3.5 million for the fire substation construction that's coming from free cash. It's a significant ask. It's a significant development in the town to have this fire substation. So we're talking about a potential substation. The property we're talking about, that I feel free to talk about now because of some votes that have happened in the past week or so, is town property on Salem Street. It's the property that's located in between the Harndon Tavern and the Medical Center. The adjacent Medical Center is at 500 Salem Street, and they're an important potential player in this project. I want to discuss a railroad right-of-way that's on that property, on their, their property, and then show a potential layout to folks so they know exactly what we're talking about, generally what we're talking about. So this is the property on Salem Street. If you, you orient yourself, Salem Street's along the bottom, the bottom left corner of that sketch is the Harndon Tavern, and you can see the Medical Center and their large parking lot on the bottom right. This property was acquired by the town in 1990 in Article 24 of the 1990 Town Meeting. That specifically authorized this land to be purchased for water department purposes, excepting one acre to be designated by a town meeting, which is to be reserved for the site of future fire substations. So it's only been 35 years, so I think we're moving along okay. So, and, and then a significant development that happened back on March 12th last week, the Border Water and Sewer Commissioners voted to surplus one additional acre of land and transfer it to the Select Board subject to a town meeting approval, which is in Article 20 of this. The adjacent property is the Medical Center at 500 Salem Street. And I know it's hard to see, their property is on the left of the screen, but it also includes a very large rail right-of-way, which runs all the way to Salem Street behind the two residential properties. Why is this property important? Firstly, because we have discussed with them specifically about getting an access easement over their entryway, so we wouldn't need to put an additional curb cut onto Salem Street. So the idea is if there's fire substation that would be, you know, adjacent to the property line, that we would use that entrance and, and, and exit, or the, the exit out there onto Salem Street. We could improve it, but we wouldn't have to put an exit closer to the Woburn Street and Salem Street intersection, which is a very important thing for, for, for safety purposes. It also saves land. It means that we don't have to have the land for an entrance and egress on our own land that they're willing to give us this easement. They also were generous enough to suggest that, you know, we, we, we could increase the size of their parking lot if we needed it for our services. So they'd be more than willing to expand their parking lot to the, to the left of where it's current formation if we needed to put parking on their land. Thirdly, as I mentioned, they own the railroad right-of-way on the back, and that comes into play for a couple of different reasons, which we'll discuss in just a second. So that red area is a railroad right-of-way. It starts, excuse me, at 93, and the town owns it all the way up till this portion, and then we continue to own it on the other side of Salem Street as it extends. One of the things that we, I discussed with the, the health center was the potential purchase of this railroad right-of-way from them in an effort to, to provide more land for the town. So we'd acquire it for general municipal purposes with a future use to be determined, but that future use could come in different, in different forms. Right now, I've discussed with town council, we do not believe that the property at, that our property that we're proposing this substation on is Article 97 protected. Because of the way that it was adopted at town meeting with the floating one acre, it's not on the, on the state's list as Article 97. But in the event that it was Article 97 and protected, one of the things that you would be required to do is to have land in the same resource area that you could swap in, you know, to swap for land if you're taking out of Article 97 protection. So if needed, we would have three acres, which is the approximate amount of that railroad right-of-way, to swap out for taking this land out of Article 97 protection if it was ever determined to be in, in such protection. Secondly, if we get through this process and there's no, and, and there's no further need for it, we could transfer that to the water department so that they would have it for additional protection of the wetlands resource that's adjacent to the, to the wells. So I think it's a good purchase for the town for both of those potential uses would be really important. So this is a potential layout. The idea of this and my, you know, this is a very, very early and has not been through any kind of feasibility, but the idea would be you'd have an access way coming off of Woburn Street, an access drive to come to the rear of a, of a substation that we'd be facing kind of diagonally towards the, towards the, the Medical Center parcel. And then in the space in between on, along Salem Street and between the Harndon Tavern and the Medical Center would be a location where you could put either septic or parking or both. And then likely we'd want to put some enhanced sidewalks along Salem Street there to allow for that parking to be used for the Harndon Tavern as well. So I just wanted folks to see this, this, a lot of this has come together over the last few weeks, and I appreciate the committee for giving me the time. Thank you.
Yes, could the manager?
Would you kindly state your name, please? You have to say it every time.
For the record?
For the record. I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Yes, of course. I'm sorry, I didn't realize there were questions on the committee. We'll get back to you. Go ahead.
So presenting the capital items, this way is different than what we've done in the past. Change is hard, but not always bad. So how will this operate at town meeting? How will this, so specifically what I'm looking at is things like the fire substation, the West Intermediate School windows. In years past, we've had those as separate warrant article items, so they're combined into one. If people are opposed to a specific item in here, how would that work at town meeting?
So that's actually a very good question, and, and it's something that we discussed with town council and with the moderator, who are both here, certainly speak for themselves. But the, the, the general idea would be that the capital plan is going to be presented as one unified capital plan. If individuals are concerned about a particular item or want to have a particular item pulled out from that to be voted on separately, they can make a request, a motion of the body to make, and the town meeting would determine whether or not an item was taken out separately or was kept in. And so that's, I think, how we talked about how it would, it would process. So again, many of these are likely to be, you know, relatively, you know, straightforward and, and not pulled out like that. But for instance, like you say, the fire substation's a very large number. If you wanted to have that pulled out, the, someone at town meeting could make a motion to, to.
What's the specific motion?
Divide the question, yeah. Motion to divide the question that would pull that particular item out and be voted on separately. Thank you.
And I also would like to just comment that last year, our budget did not include a lot of capital items that have rolled forward. So we have almost the equivalent of two years of capital items here. So hopefully ongoing, we won't see a list like this.
No, I think that's, that's fair, and I think it's important to point out. Last year, Lou, who did an excellent job, was, was tasked with a capital plan that was only for things that were desperately needed in the year because he was operating as a, as the interim town manager. So we are doing a little bit of catch-up for things that, that would, in a normal year, might have been in last year's capital plan. That's correct.
Any other questions? No. Mr. McDonald, my apologies. That was my error.
Could you bring up the slide that shows the overlay of the potential fire substation? I just want to get a clarification, because the manager mentioned about getting an easement through the Medical Center parking lot. Can you, I, I don't see where there's any type of easement on there. Can you tell us where it would be on that property?
So if you can imagine, if you look at the, the, the exit from the Medical Center that is immediately adjacent to the red portion on this, the right side of the red portion, that would be where the, the access easement would go. So we'd come out of the Medical Center parking lot, yes. Thanks, John. Yeah, right there. That's the, that's the location that we were discussing. And again, very preliminarily, we don't have any plans or haven't had any architectural renderings or done any engineering on it, but I have discussed it with the Medical Center about that particular easement.
The other question I had, Mr. Manager, is the town has been involved in a search for a site, for a substation for like a lot of years. And I'm hearing you say that this property was purchased and an acre was set aside for a fire substation. So my question is, why has there been years and years of searching for a location for a fire substation when this particular purchase had that contingency in it?
That's an excellent question. I don't know. I, I can speculate that the concerns about Article 97 were real. I, I can say with some confidence, I've dealt with Article 97 before, and I was not intimidated by the idea of Article 97, but some people are. I mean, Article 97 can be a very, a very frustrating article to deal with because you have to go to the legislature and you have to get, you know, you have to get land in the same resource area, and it can be kind of a daunting task. So, you know, but, but I, I will say, you know, we had a list of 10 properties. I want to give Paul Looney a lot of credit. He had identified this property with the specific language and, and, and also the concerns about whether or not Article 97 applied. And the only thing I can speculate is that that was a concern that, that, that at the time, no one was willing to kind of investigate.
Thank you.
Okay, just a few things I'd like to mention here. With regard to the ancient railroad bed easement, we have water flowing out of town. You heard Valerie mention earlier about the potential need to repair a culvert down by shale concrete. And what I would like to see is incorporated into this project is a way to capture that water that's flowing out of town. And we just recently heard about devastating fires in Hawaii and California.
Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're beyond the scope of this particular article, and you're also significantly out of time.
Yeah, his time's not my time, though. So I just wanted to say that I would like to see a pipeline to a sister that could capture maybe 250,000 gallons of water in the event of a water problem with the pump that we could actually use that to bring our fire engines in there. And thank you for having no clue, Manganieli brain.
A sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Select Board for PEG access service pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Act, Chapter 44, Section 53F and three quarters, or take any other action related there, too. I'm sorry, sir?
I have a question on Article 6.
All right, come forward.
First of all, I question the need for this substation anyway. I don't think we're that far north Wilmington from the station. I don't know what the study was done. Secondly, has anyone have any idea of personnel costs to occupy this facility? Will it be transfers from the downtown facility? Or will it be a whole bunch of new staff? And what will that cost be?
I think the common plan is that it will entail people that are already employed by the by the town, but, you know, we'll see as the building comes into play.
I, I could say that the, the plan for the North Wilmington Fire Substation is to use current staff and current equipment.
I'm a little confused. Do we own the land? Or we, but we have to buy additional land for other access from the other roads? And this is just for construction, correct? Not buying land?
Sure. So, so the $3.5 million is a first down payment on this substation construction. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to build a substation for $3.5 million. I wish that we could. So that is just for the construction of the substation. There are separate articles in, in this warrant, articles, I believe it is 22 and 23, which talk about the acquisition of easement and the acquisition of a rail, of the rail bed. So I, I can certainly discuss this. We don't have, I think the easement would, would generally be, be for nothing and the, the rail bed would be at fair market value, but that wouldn't be a high cost.
Okay, thank you. Does that, does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so back to Article 7. Does anybody have any questions we got in this article?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to mention, this is generally about $500,000. It comes from Comcast and Verizon, payments to the town under their cable contracts and is given to WCTV for their programming.
Article 8. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the funding of a 4th of July celebration, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is $50,000. It's been done annually for the last several years.
Free cash or tax levy?
It's coming out of, out of the general fund.
Article 9. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is $13,000. It's the same amount that was funded for these celebrations last year. General fund.
$15,000, you said?
$13,000, yes. And just, just, I, I think for note from everyone, the only free, things we're funding through free cash are things in the capital plan. I believe that's correct.
Article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of $750 each, a total of $1,500, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section 9 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws as amended. The lease of A, Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse, for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the knee Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and B, American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion, or take any other action related thereto. And the amount is $1,500. Moving along. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to determine the spending limits for revolving accounts established pursuant to Section 53E 1/2 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws in Section 5 of Chapter 73 of the Town of Wilmington inhabitant bylaws revolving funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2026 as follows, or take any other action related thereto. This is the revolving fund account for the compost bin revolving fund. The spending authority limit is $4,500 FY year ending 2026. Subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, the spending authority limit is $200,000 for the fiscal year ending 2026. Go ahead.
Yes, maybe the manager could answer this question. It talks about the spending authority limit being $200,000. I'm under the assumption that this is to bring people's septic systems up to Title V compliance. And number one, I would like to know, even though it says the authority limit's $200,000, how much is actually in that fund? And what are some details that people in town watching this should be aware of? And what is their requirements for eligibility for this?
Hi, Shelley Newhouse, Director of Public Health. This was a loan that we had taken out about, I'm going to say 20 years ago. We originally received a loan from the Department of Wild Management Protection for $200,000. So at, at that time, we started giving out loans to people that needed to replace their failed subsurface sewage disposal systems. So we expended all that money, so now we work with that account as a revolving account. So as people that have used that money pay back into the account, we use that money then to loan back out more money. So right now in our encumbered account, I would say that we probably have about, I think, $7,000 because we started to pay back the state, the original $200,000. So every year as money kind of builds up in that account, I loan out more money to people that need it. And it's a 5% loan payable back over 10 years and it goes as an increase as like a tax lien on their taxes. And I have a short application that people can apply with me to see if they're eligible to utilize the funds. So as the, like I said before, right now we're kind of short on funds, but every month it builds up and builds up. So that's how we use it.
And Ms. Newhouse, I'm assuming that it's based on income? Is that a criteria?
Yes. The criteria is that really some of the criteria is the house has to be owner occupied. So you couldn't use this money if you were going to sell your house. So let's say you wanted to sell your house and you had a failed Title V inspection. We don't offer the money for that. It's for owner occupied homes. It's based on, there's an income range and it's also based on the criteria is we ask people to go to a bank first to see if they can get a loan from a bank. And if they get denied from a bank, they can then come and see me for a loan.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused here because I thought Shelley said that there's a balance of $7,000 in that account. Is that right? So if there's $7,000 in that account for a balance, how can we have the spending authority limit of $200,000?
If I may. We're, we're talking about revolving funds. Revolving funds are essentially self-funding programs. The, the spending authority limit is the limit that can be spent from that, of that fund based upon what's in that fund. So there's a total of $200,000, which should be the limit, but the only amount that can be spent is the amount that's in the fund. So money comes in, it's spent out. It's nothing that can be, quote, quote, overdrawn. It is only spent based upon what's in the fund. It's a self-funding program.
Thank you very much. Ms. McDonald, you're out of time. I'm sorry.
Yeah, his time is not mine.
We're moving along to Article 12.
Is his name Kevin?
To see if the town will vote to.
Is the manager's name Kevin? Why, why, why would my time be their time?
Of Chapter 73 of the Town of Wilmington inhabitant bylaws revolving funds, to establish a revolving fund in accordance with MLG, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, with a spending limit authority of $25,000 for the purpose of receiving monies for the use of Wilmington High School fields, to be used for the payment of Public Buildings Department and Department of Public Works personnel required to cover activities as follows. So we have a revolving account by the name of the High School Fields revolving account with the spending authority by the town manager up to $25,000. Revenue source, fees from use of the high school fields, and allowed expenses are salaries of Public Buildings Department and Department of Public Works personnel required to cover activities. This requires, this pertains to fiscal year 2026 and subsequent fiscal years.
Just to speak very briefly.
This is new.
Yes, this is a new revolving account we're going to set up. There've been multiple requests by nonprofits to use the fields at the high school. Our collective bargaining agreements with DPW and Public Works staff indicate that we have to have them staffed, those fields staffed if they are being used. And therefore, it draws down the department overtime if they're used. And so if the, the usage goes up, their overtime gets, gets drawn down. So rather than pay it out of department overtime, we'd rather have that kind of use of those fields be self-funded. So as the payments come in, it pays for the overtime of the, of the individuals and the department's overtime is left for department level functions.
What, what fields are we talking about specifically? It's just the high school fields?
This is covered the, the high school fields, yeah.
And who would be?
So we, we have requests from Pop Warner to use the, the football field. The turf field is, I, I would imagine the most, the most popular field. So I think soccer likes to use it, lacrosse likes to use it, Pop Warner especially likes to use it. And so in the past, we've had some concerns about using that regularly because we would then be coming before the FinCom to ask for money to, to replace the, the overtime account. This makes it self-funded, therefore we can have that operation, the operation of those fields and the overtime costs associated with it operated in kind of a bubble. And the department's overtime is not reflective of the use of that field, which is, I think, appropriate.
Okay. Great. Do you have a question? Are you going to charge the nonprofits for use of the field?
The, they, they currently are. They're, when, when an individual uses that field, they're charged the cost of the, of the overtime. So it's, wouldn't be a change of, from.
And it's only at the high school field, you're not?
This is for the high school fields. Those are the fields that we're, that this is being used for.
Thank you.
Yes, so just.
Say your name, please.
Same, same as it was.
Ms. McDonald, this is not me picking on you. This is for the record.
I know, but if.
So would you kindly just repeat?
It's for the record?
Would you kindly, please?
If it's for the record, how come you're not keeping a record?
When you stand to comment, please.
Kevin McDonald. I would recall your video where we're looking to replace the high school turf field for I personally think that the high school field should be for town use and not other entities coming in. We have the entire field that could be used for that. I would like to know, maybe the manager can tell us, what actually does town staff do when a field's being used? What actually is their function out there that we have to pay, that these organizations have to pay money for?
As I mentioned, Madam Chair, it's part of the collective working agreement that when those fields are in use, there's requires to be custodians on staff. There's also required setup time for, that comes from, from DPW. So DPW typically has a smaller line item, but custodians are required to be on staff when those fields are being used.
Okay, thank you. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or transfer from department receipts or user fees, a sum of money to operate the Department of Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That amount, I believe, is $3,747,035.
And could you just explain a little bit more what this enterprise fund is for? Just for the folks at home?
Sure. So the, the sewer enterprise fund funds the salaries and operating expenses of our sewer department. So we, the, the, the town operates a municipal sewer system and has staff that, you know, maintain and oversee that sewer system. This also is, is the, the, the capital program that we put on for the $1.2 million, that's not included in the $3.7 million, but the, the sewer, the, the pump station, the industrial pump station is a sewer project and so it's overseen by sewer department staff. So that's, that's where that comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Just to clarify, this, this is, money's not raised by taxation, but this is monies raised through the sewer, the cost of the, the users, the people who use our sewer system. This is appropriating that money to spend it for that purpose.
Yes, that's correct. That's a very good point. So that we, we have a sewer enterprise and so it has, this includes full-time and part-time staff, includes miscellaneous contractual services, includes our MWRA assessment that comes from that, the, the, the $3.7 million. And it comes from the sewer, the fees that are paid by the folks on, on sewer.
Thank you. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to deposit in the other post-employment liability trust fund established in accordance with MGL, Chapter 32B, Section 20, or take any other action related thereto.
Yes, Madam Chair. So as in the past, this is a $1 million funds that's set aside to pay towards the outstanding balance in our OPEB trust fund and it's set aside for those future expenses.
Thank you.
Kevin McDonald. Has this board ever requested an agenda item to be put on the Board of Selectmen so that people could actually see who manages the money, see where the money's going, find out how much our liability is? Have you ever put forth a request for an agenda item for the select board?
No.
Okay, because I did and, and they refused to hold a hearing to educate people or to identify what's going on with this. And we're seeing a ton of money being put into this and we don't know where these investments are going. We don't know what the return on the investments are. We don't know if we're bailing out bad investments. And for this board to expect the people at town meeting to show you any respect or to even consider what your recommendation is for approval or disapproval, I don't know how somebody could actually even take this board's advice and, and vote accordingly. So very disappointed in the select board and disappointed in this board for not drilling down and asks, actually exposing this to the people of Wilmington.
Thank you. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to deposit in the capital stabilization fund as established by vote on Article 23 at the April 27, 1991 annual town meeting, or take any other action related thereto.
Madam Chair, this is where, as I indicated earlier, we're putting in $3 million into capital stabilization. That fund currently has slightly over $13 million in it, so this will give it a balance of about 16 and a half million, I think, and change. And, and we're doing this in preparation to give the town as many, as many opportunities to, to make determinations as we go forward about spending towards capital projects.
Thank you.
If the manager would be so kind to tell us if that's one particular fund and who, what financial institution holds those funds and what kind of interest return we are on, we're getting on that fund?
That is not an appropriate question for this.
Why, why would that not be inappropriate for $16.5 million? Why would that not be appropriate?
You are going into detail that can be resolved in another department and not here tonight.
You're looking to have a meeting to come to town meeting and make recommendations for a budget that's like going out of control.
You're asking questions that create a different level of detail that we don't have at the moment.
I know, but you should be the one that's asking these questions.
Article 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to deposit into the retirement stabilization fund, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the past, the town has continually funded this, this extra payment towards our outstanding pension liability. There is a retirement stabilization. There is a retirement stabilization fund already set up in town, and so rather than, as has been the past, we send our extra million-dollar payment directly to the Middlesex Retirement Board, which does pay down our existing pension liability and is definitely a good thing. This keeps it in-house, so we have control over when those payments go directly toward paying our outstanding pension liability. This will allow us, if possible, to possibly pay off that pension liability early. When you make early payments to Middlesex Retirement, they just take your amount and stretch it out over the same amount of time, and you just have lower payments every year. But if we keep it ourselves, we can make a lump sum payment and pay it off a year, maybe even two years early, if that's possible. And that's the goal, is to continue to collect that in our own retirement fund that we have control over, that will allow us to potentially pay that off early, and then we could move earlier on some of the projects they talked about earlier.
Are we transferring any money into this year?
Yes, it's $1.5 million.
Thank you.
And the current balance in that retirement stabilization fund, I believe, is about $3.7 million.
Kevin McDonald, regarding the retirement stabilization fund, I'm aware of some people who, the husband and wife both worked for the town, and now they're retired and they're both bringing home, or combined bringing home about $200,000 a year in retirement. And can the manager tell us if this is to help them increase their cost of living and increase their pension, or if the pension that was set for them when they retired stays the same?
So a retirement stabilization fund is not about individual retirees. The amount of pensions and their increases are dealt with at the Middlesex Retirement Board. So that's outside the scope of the town's determination. These funds are for the town to pay down our outstanding pension liability in an earlier fashion than we would normally be able to.
Thank you. Article 17, "To see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year 2025 budget, from other line items of said budget, and from other available funds, or take any other action related thereto."
This time, I don't anticipate us having anything for this article, but that will be determined as we get closer to the table.
Okay. Thank you. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to replace the water main on Main Street, Route 38, from the intersection of 62 to Ames Street, including but not limited to design, engineering, and construction costs, and any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action related thereto." And this is an article from the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, as earlier mentioned, we were talking about the overall plan for the budget. This is the $5.5 million. This is, again, not going to be funded out of the general fund. It'll be funded from water rates.
What was the amount again?
$5.5 million. And then again, just to be clear, that is an estimate. It has gone up since the last time. It was on the capital plan last year at a lower amount. It did go up, but those are still just estimates.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to ask the board if they have any questions? Could the manager tell us the length of water line that's being replaced and how many people are employed by the water department? Actually, I should clarify that. How many people are employed by the water department who are supposed to have the technical ability to fix a hydrant, install a water line, and that sort of thing? Just looking for the amount of footage of that pipe.
Could we get an answer as far as the footage only, please?
Good evening. Jamie McGaw, the Public Works Director. The approximate footage is just under two miles. It's a very big project.
Thank you very much.
And is there a particular reason why we have to go to outside engineering department when we have an engineering department? Is there a particular reason why our engineering department can't design this or utilize other water lines that have been replaced in town and see how they were designed and have our engineering department design it accordingly?
For the scale of projects like this, this is, it's not something that's not in-house by any means, but it's just not, it's not appropriate for an in-house job.
Thank you. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to construct the industrial waste sewer pump station, including but not limited to design, engineering, and construction costs, and any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action related thereto." And this is also from the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, as I mentioned earlier, $1.2 million for the industrial waste sewer pump station. Also, this is going to be funded from sewer assessments as opposed to from the general fund.
Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the key custody, management, and control of approximately one acre portion of the parcel of land located on Salem Street and identified by the assessors as parcel 102-1B from the Water and Sewer Commission for water department purposes to the select board for general municipal purposes, including without limitation for the purpose of construction of fire substation thereon. Such parcel to be combined with the one acre portion of land originally set aside for a fire substation pursuant to the vote taken under Article 24 of the 1990 annual town meeting, both as approximately shown as, and I don't have the data on that, on a plan entitled, insert name of plan, as on file with the town clerk, or take any other action related thereto."
I apologize. So the current form of this is, that's shown as substation partial on a plan of line entitled Sketch of Land for Proposed Substation, March 13, 2025, which is on file with the town clerk. This is the first of three articles of the next four that have to do with the substation. This is the effectuating of the transfer of the land that was surplus by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners to the select board to be combined to create the two acres we're going to need for the substation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to ask the board?
Oh, please. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. I know we covered this a couple of weeks ago in the Fire Department presentation. The initial outlay expected to be $3.5 million. So we have kind of two ways, three ways, really. We can approve that in a town vote, and that's the initial outlay. We can vote no as a town, and then we spend nothing. Option three would be we find another location. Is there, I guess what I'm trying to get at, since this is the Finance Committee, are we saving money potentially by accepting this Article 20 as opposed to looking for another location, which has taken 35 years?
So in my discussions with the fire chief about this, and he and I have talked about this several times, the location that this substation needs to be in order to have the highest impact on North Wilmington is a fairly finite, you know, circle. There's not a, it's not like there's, you know, 100 parcels that you could look at. And then you have to look at ownership. This is the one that we own that's in that location. You have to look at, you know, access. This is one has very quick access to 93. If we owned a separate, so we are doing a feasibility study. That feasibility study is going to, you know, take a look at other parcels. But I can't imagine, given acquisition costs, that there's any other parcel that would be financially as viable as the one we have in front of us right now. I can't imagine that being the case.
So, of course, you don't have an exact number, but your best guess would be this is cheaper than any alternative?
Oh, certainly. I mean, just because, so we don't own a parcel that we could put this on, other than this one. The other parcels that the town owns in the area are, two covered by wetlands, are restricted by Article 97, or are not the appropriate size, you know, landlocked. They're not at all feasible. So I can't imagine, given that we're looking for two acres of parcel in the kind of a prime location near the highway, that that cost alone of acquisition wouldn't be sufficient to push, you know, an alternate site into a more expensive proposition. Plus, we don't have that identified right now. So we're talking about time costs as well.
Yes, there seems to be a lot of wasted money for feasibility studies when they have it narrowed down to one actual parcel of land. If you really did want to save money, you could actually put a fire substation where the DPW building is and take the DPW headquarters and put it at the recycling center if you really wanted to save money and not oppress people in taxes. But I was wondering, one question for the manager. Can you elaborate for the people watching in town a little bit more about Article 97 and the restrictions and the compliance necessary for that?
So again, very briefly, Article 97 is a state statute when a municipality acquires land that is going to be used for recreational space or open space or water protection. Article 97 is, can be triggered either specifically because you say, "I'm using it for park space," and "I'm using it for Article 97 space," or by implication, if you're using it for a use that is an Article 97 use. A municipality cannot by itself take land out of Article 97 protection without going and getting voted to state legislature. That has to be, that typically requires a swap of another piece of land that the town owns that is not Article 97 protected, that is within the same resource area. So that's kind of the general rules about Article 97.
Okay. Thank you.
The reason for my question is, he brought up the fact that there were some concerns about Article 97 regarding this property, and I'd just like to know if it's 100% guaranteed that there is no conflicts with compliance with that particular statute?
So nobody can guarantee anything for 100%. The property is not listed on the state's database of Article 97 land. The way that the town acquired it, which was acquired it for water department purposes, but with this one floating acre that yes, to be determined where there was going to be a substation, makes it highly unlikely that somebody could make a straight-faced argument that we intended that land to be protected as a whole when we planned to use an acre of it to put a substation on. So those are the...
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, your time is up.
Yeah, I just went to the registry of deeds. I couldn't find any thing listed under that.
Thank you. We have another speaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Greg Bendel, 57 Rev. Isabel Road. First of all, I want to assure you that my plan is only to come to the microphone twice tonight, so not to abuse your time. I do rise in support of this article and the articles that are associated with it. I just publicly wanted to come up and commend our town administration and our department heads in what has been their relentless pursuit of this property. I think this is a great opportunity for our town. I'd like to specifically thank the Water and Sewer Commission for their vote last week, and I also want to compliment both chiefs who are standing in support of this location and their relentless pursuit of this. I also want to mention that I, as the current chair of the Board of Selectmen, and all of my colleagues, I've been supportive of a new subfire station, as have my previous colleagues who served on the board before me. And so I think this is a very unique opportunity for us, and I commend the town administration for continually going back and looking at spaces that we actually did look at before, as was mentioned, as dating back to the 90s. But I think this is a unique opportunity, especially with the proposition of a new school on the north side of town. This could literally be the matter of life and death, and I think this is a critical opportunity, and I hope others will support it with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, an additional sum of money to supplement the amount approved by the vote taken under Article 40 of the April 29, 2023 annual town meeting, authorizing the select board to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain, or otherwise all or a portion of the property or interests therein located at 333 Andover Street and shown on assessors map R1 as Lot 21A, or take any other action related thereto."
Thank you, Madam Chair. As folks are likely aware, a couple of years ago, the town meeting voted to set aside a certain amount of funds for an eminent domain taking of Sharapa Farm. In the interim, the town has been doing its due diligence on whether or not the property, the ground is contaminated, so that we wouldn't be exposing the town to additional liability if we consummated the taking. Because the original appraisal for that parcel was done back in 2003, we are currently updating the appraisal. We anticipate the updated appraisal number at the beginning of April. And so if the select board so determines that after we get that number, that they need to request for additional funds, that would be why this is here. We don't have a number for it right now.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Do you want to ask the board if they have any questions?
Mr. McDonald, do you have a comment to make, please?
I do. For those people that are watching who might not be aware of this, this is the Sharapa property, and it's about 60 acres of land. The town took a piece of property on Wildwood Street, and they took it by eminent domain, and they ended up having to pay double for what they thought they were going to pay. It's my estimation that this property is worth about $30 million. And so when the administration comes before the town and they're trying to purchase a piece of property and they don't know exactly the ramifications of a lawsuit, it just seems to me that a few years ago, they were looking to pay like $5 million for the property for 60 acres. And I'm seeing properties on Main Street selling for, I think it's one acre sold for $2 million. So it just seems like this is opening up a can of worms for the town. But I would like the manager to clarify something. In the article, it says to acquire by gift, purchase, or more specifically eminent domain, the owners of the property, I would imagine that they would have had to give you permission to go onto their property to do testing. And so if the people that own the property, maybe they didn't give you, maybe they didn't give you permission, but they did. Okay. So why is there language in here that says eminent domain rather than just a purchase and a negotiated price so that the town isn't faced with a lawsuit from eminent domain?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
If the article was read correctly, you'd understand, and I'm sure the board understands, that that's a reference to the article that was previously authorized by town meeting. This is simply to fund additional funding as necessary, explained by the town manager. That action's already been taken, and that does allow a number of options for the acquisition of this property, gift, purchase, or eminent domain. That action's already been taken by town meeting. We're not renewing that action. This is just a funding article.
Thank you.
So he even caused more confusion there.
Quickly, Mr. McDonald.
So he said basically that the prior town meeting authorized a dollar amount, and then we're coming back for an additional funding. And so what actually is the anticipated amount to purchase this property?
Mr. McDonald, you were just advised that we do not have that number on hand. We are basically just updating the valuation of the property.
Okay. So there hasn't been a set-in-stone negotiation finality with the family that owns it?
You're all set, sir. Thank you. Article 23, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds..." Oh, I'm, I apologize. Oh, I apologize. 22. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, and upon such terms and for such consideration as the Select Board deems appropriate, permanent and temporary easements in, on, under, and across the property located at 500 Salem Street for the purpose of providing access to and installing utilities to serve the proposed North Wilmington Fire Substation, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any donations, mitigation payments, grants, or loans in connection herewith, and to take such actions, enter into any and all agreements, and execute such documents as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article, or take any other action related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As mentioned earlier, this is the second of the three articles. This one is contemplating the easement over the entranceway to the medical center for the substation.
Do we have a dollar amount?
I don't have dollar amounts for either of these numbers. We are putting an appraisal out for the rail bed, but that's going to be a negotiation we have with the medical center once we get that appraisal back before town meeting.
Before town meeting?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Again, I just have a problem with the fact that eminent domain is in the language, but even more concerning a temporary easement. Why would we have language for temporary easement? If we need an easement, why is it saying temporary? So that's about all I have to say.
Madam Chair, again, if the individual properly read the article, it says permanent and temporary easements, so there are a variety of potential access issues that are being resolved, so there may be additional temporary easements necessary for construction, laydown, other purposes. The language regarding acquisition by gift, purchase, or eminent domain allows the town the full range of options for the acquisition process, as the manager has already explained.
Thank you very much. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, and upon such terms and for such consideration as the Select Board deems appropriate, the fee to and/or permanent and temporary rights in the northeast portion of the property located at 500 Salem Street, consisting of an abandoned railroad right-of-way for general municipal purposes, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any donations, mitigation payments, grants, or loans in connection herewith, to take any actions, enter into any and all agreements, and execute such documents as are necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, or to take any other action related thereto.
So thank you, Madam Chair. And as promised, this is the third one. This is regarding the rail bed. And again, we have a RFP out for an appraisal for that rail bed, and we'll have a negotiated, hopefully a negotiated price with the medical center prior to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin McDonald. Yes, Mr. Manager. Am I accurate in assuming that the medical center pays zero taxes to the town because they're a medical facility?
No, that's not accurate.
Can you tell us how much a year they pay to the town? No. Okay. Just a question for the board. I saw Mr. Bendel stand up earlier, and he said that they've been actively pursuing this parcel. In terms of the full Board of Selectmen being here tonight, in compliance with the law, would that have been something that needed to be advertised as an agenda item for the board to be here in its full capacity here? No? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Article 24 was a planning board meeting article, excuse me. So we're on to Article 25. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 90, Section 90-10B of the Bylaws of the Inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington as follows: With the strike-through language deleted and the bold and underlined language inserted, or take any other action related thereto. So I'm not going to go and read this article here, but this pertains to the drawing of articles at town meeting.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an amendment to the random draw article. And so the current language is, certain articles which are in sequence and are related to each other whereby the passage of the first is dependent upon the passage of the next article, is the current language. And as folks who sat through the special time meeting in December realize, it doesn't give the moderator a lot of leeway as to whether or not to take articles if they are reasonably related to one another. So rather than, so this would be, change that language to say, "The moderator determines are reasonably related to one another." So it still is random draw. If, just to take December 7th, where we had five articles, three of them were zoning articles that had to do with MBTA, and two of them were financing articles. The minute one of those zoning articles was drawn, the moderator could have said, "I think all three of these zoning articles are related, so we're going to take all three of them in order now." And I think it just allows the meeting to take things up in a much more rational kind of order that makes sense to them and doesn't delay two related articles that could be hours apart at a town meeting. I think that's happened in the past. It happened in December. This maintains random draw, which I think some people find very important, but it does give the moderator the idea of being able to group things together if they're rationally related.
Thank you. Article 26, 27, 28, and 29 are planning board articles. So we're going to skip up to Article 30, which is on page 12. Article 30. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 64, Section 64-1 of the inhabitant bylaws to name a conference room at the new Wilmington Town Hall in honor of Dr. Phyllis D. Genetti, who served over 30 years on the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities, and to have a sign installed to commemorate the same, or take any other action related thereto.
I'm Rob Oliveri. I'm a member of the Commission on Disabilities. First and foremost, Madam Chair, thank you. Committee members, thanks for your service. I'm here really just to answer any questions that you have. It'd be very quick, but I had the privilege of being on the board with her, Dr. D. Genetti, for eight years, and she was a big advocate of the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities and all disabled for 30-plus years. She was in two accidents where she received two TBIs, and during that time, she maintained her presence on that board, even though she was learning how to speak, she was a paraplegic. But if anyone deserves a room, a hall, a building, we asked for a conference room to be named in her honor. I really can't think of anyone in my lifetime that deserves it more than her, and I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you have any questions?
Scott? So a question more for the town than for you. I did have a few interactions with Dr. Genetti, and she was absolutely wonderful and fantastic for the Commission's abilities. Last year, we had an article about renaming a school, and there was questions about the policies of naming a building. Does the town have any policies about naming a conference room?
I'm not aware of any policies about naming a conference room.
All right, I just don't want to get too far down the road and then have something say, "We have a policy against that," or... Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much for that information. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to adopt an add as Chapter 148, Section 1 to the inhabitant's bylaw, a demolition delay bylaw, in the form set forth below, or take any other action related thereto. This is a very extensive article. It spans several pages, so I will not be reading it. It is being supported and brought forward by the Historical Commission.
Hi, my name is Joseph Jackson on Tin Apple Tree Lane. I'm on the Historical Commission. And we propose this because when we look at our housing stock in Wilmington, and there's lots of concern about, you know, are we doing our due diligence to our heritage and maintaining the nature and charisma of our town? And then we compare with the town bylaws of our neighboring towns. Wilmington does not have any demolition delays, unlike all of our surrounding towns, which do have demolition delays on their bylaws. Typically, those have a time period and an eligibility requirement. And so through the language of this bylaw, which is modeled after the bylaw, which is standing right now in Andover, it sets a set of criteria for a period of inspection and research of, is the property historically significant after that determination has been made? Along with, is the building unsafe? You know, that could be an easy way out of having a demolition delay. That determination of non-applicability is also written into the bylaw. Processed timelines and requirements for determining if that preferable preservation is merited, and then timelines for prompt communication between the inspector of buildings, the Historical Commission, and the applicant, and then also conditions for lifting the demolition delay. Inside the proposed delay is for buildings which meet these criteria of being historically significant, there would be a 12-month period over which the owner of the property looks for opportunities to rehabilitate, or refurbish, or find a buyer who is willing to occupy the building in its current state or in a remodeled state if necessary. And the point here is just to slow things down so that Wilmington doesn't look like a punching bag compared to our neighboring towns, where developers can find an old property that's on historic acreage and propose a development quickly and easily without any sort of oversight by the Historical Commission.
You still are signing off on building permits, though?
Yes, without any real enforcement, like there's no recourse to say, "No, we won't sign off on that currently." This bylaw puts criteria under which that approval would be allowed.
Understood. Thank you.
I have a question. So you're saying that it would be a 12-month delay before you would issue a building or sign off on a building?
The determination period is 40 days between the application and the determination to be published. There would be a public hearing, there would be a period of research, the abutters could come and make commentary. But this would only apply to those buildings that are currently on a historic inventory, either by the state, or the nation, or the town, which affects about 1.5% of our housing stock. By our current count, it's 128 properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Scott? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
So can I ask a question? So this bylaw, you saying this bylaw would only apply to those 128 properties in this community? So if I had a house that I built in 1945, that you know nothing about, if I want to tear it down and put up a McMansion, I can still do that without having to wait 40 days? I'm just trying to understand the scope of this.
Correct. Yeah, so our...
And if that's the case, then aren't there other ways to, you know, I mean, I'm trying to find a balance between our historic, our interest in preserving our historic nature and the ownership rights that these people, that these property owners have, that they didn't know, I mean, we're kind of putting this on them when they, you know, they didn't know about it when they bought the property, so it could reduce the value of their property or whatever. So I'm just, I'm trying to work out some of these things that might have, which didn't create a very coachy question. I apologize.
No, but first, starting about the historicity of a property, like if it was built in 1940 and, you know, John F. Kennedy never slept there, or some person of significance or activity. In the bylaw, there's criteria for historical significance, whether it be an activity, or a person, or of special historic stylistic elements of the property. And currently, our inventory does not include things that are under 100 years old. That's kind of the minimum criteria. And those properties, if they're not on the inventory, would already be, you know, directly signed off by the inspector of buildings and the chair of the Historical Commission. The consideration of, you know, owners' rights, that's a true and viable concern. I did a survey last summer of the town residents. There were 60-some-odd respondents. 90% of those said that they would like to see our historical districts, which we have signposts on, have some sort of protection about them. Currently, they're just signposts saying, "Here's our historical district." But there's nothing, you know, inherently protecting that district from having it disrupted by new development. So there was an appetite for having those protections in place. And then one other interesting fact is, over the past 50 years, 21 of our historical homes have been lost to demolition and replacement. So we know that we're not building old homes anymore. They're just, you know, slowly attrition to new development. This is just a means to slow things down a little bit to see, is there alternate means for preservation or transfer of property to somebody who does like older properties?
So is there a means in this bylaw to bypass the one-year wait period if they can show during the application period that they already made due diligence attempts to find somebody to buy the property as-is?
There is. As part of that hearing, within the first 40 days, if there has been demonstrated, if there's enough evidence that it should not be preferably preserved, then that signature can be attained.
I'm not sure that's what I asked. Let me ask it again, because I'm not forming my questions well tonight. So is there a way, so if I were a property owner, and I'm not, of an older home, and I knew about this bylaw, I might, before I said, "Well, I'll sell it to a developer and demolish it," because I'm into historic homes, right? I'm living in one, I'd try to sell it as-is, and if I fail, then my last resort was, "Well, I've got to move, I'm being transferred, I've got to sell it to a developer." You know, can you bypass the one year by saying, "Well, I already did that. I already checked. I already put it on the market. I already looked for that buyer, and I want to bypass that year wait." I know I'm trying to be difficult here, but it is in here. I haven't had...
AD and C in the location.
Yeah, 148-4D. There's exit criteria for early exit, mutually agreeable.
Thank you.
Scott?
Like Dr. Jackson, I do have concerns about people who currently own these properties and all of a sudden putting this bylaw on them. There's no way to, you know, grandfather people in, essentially, and for when new properties are purchased, they would fall into this bylaw. So if someone has owned their home for 30 years, and it, you know, is deemed historical, they now have a new, they have a new bylaw on their house now that they did not have.
Right. Right, and that's a good point. That's right. And it would slow things down and say, "Well, if you bought it as a historical home, why are you intending on just demolishing it?"
There could be any number of reasons for that. But I understand, yes. But I understand, yes.
And, you know, this is for us to be on par with our neighboring communities, that we are trying to preferably preserve the historic homes.
Right, okay. Total demolition is how you're phrasing this. So this might be a better question, it could be Building Inspector, because I believe there's something in here about a demolition permit or something. But what does that, can someone strip their house down, or is that considered demolition?
So in the definition in that second paragraph, it said, "It's not intended that this bylaw cover customary or usual alterations, whether major or minor, to historically significant buildings or structures, provided that the character and effect of such alterations is not in the opinion of the inspector, tantamount to demolition of such building or structure in contravention of the above intent and purpose." So the inspector would be able to judge, does this look like a significantly new structure or remodel of the previous structure?
Okay. And my final thing here is, in the last, second-to-last paragraph, 148-6, it says, "Demolition permit in accordance with the provisions of this bylaw shall be subject to a fine of not, shall be subject to a fine not more than $300." So basically, if someone ignores this, they get a $300 fine? Is that what that is?
Yeah, and again, that's borrowed from the Andover language, also with a building permit delay of a certain period of time after that, I think it was two years. Subsection 3 has been demolished for a period of two years from the date of demolition. So again, it's just slowing things down. It is intended to be a deterrent from, you know, absconding with the property and knocking it over, and then immediately having a build permit to say, "Well, it's empty now, let's build on the property."
Okay. Thank you.
So as of right now, any building in Wilmington that's going to be demolished has to get the approval from the Historical Commission. What is the timeframe right now for that?
I don't think there is a timeline right now.
So now you're going to extend that for 40 days before you can issue, this goes before the Building Inspector to get a demolition permit?
The finding of historical significance has to be made prior to 40 days after the request for a demolition permit.
Okay, so I'll ask a question again. How long, right now, are those demolition permits being issued?
Yeah, I don't know how long. My guess is that it happens within a couple of weeks.
Okay, so you now have 40 days to sign off, under 40 days?
Because, right, this would require a research period, information gathering, publicity to the neighbors through a newspaper, a public hearing, and then the finding and signing.
So that would affect every property, is my point?
No, just ones that are on the inventory, on the historical inventory, which, right now, again, is limited to about 128 properties. So if they're on the state registry or on the town historic inventory, then they would be subject to that inspection, you know, the research period. If they're not on the state list or the town list, then it would be as with current process.
Right, they still would take 40 days to determine where they don't--
148-3. Yeah. Right, so in 148-3, there's four subsections there. Any building or structure listed or which is subject of a pending application for inclusion on the National Register of Historical Places or the Massachusetts State Register of Historical Places, any building or structure located within 200 feet of the boundary line of any federal, state, or local historical district, any building or structure included in the inventory of historical or prehistoric assets of the Commonwealth maintained by the Commission, or which is designated by the Commission for inclusion in said inventory. And then Section D doesn't apply right now because we don't have any historic preservation districts. We only have local historic districts.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. I just need some clarity on the timing, because it's kind of framed as like a one-year pause, and then there's this 40 days, but it's really 40 days to get to a hearing, then another 30 days for, based on a determination, for the applicant to do a bunch of stuff. They have to file pictures and paperwork. Then there's another 50 days for another hearing. Then there's another 60 days to make a determination of that hearing. Am I reading that incorrectly?
The days are, for example, if you look in 148-4D, it's within 60 days of the Commission's receipt of the demolition removal plan. So there are triggers that cascade so that there's time for due diligence and planning and response in each of these.
So if each trigger occurred on the last day of the period, it's not really one year, it's really a year and a half?
No, I think the one year is at the time of--
It's 12 months from the date the Commission determined that the building or structure was historically significant.
Right, and that happens prior to the 40-day mark. So the max would be, I guess, 12 months plus 40 days.
Right.
Many of those timelines are concurrent.
Okay. So I have one concern, well, I have several concerns, but I'm thinking about if a family inherited a property that was within 200 feet of your setback, or to their surprise had some kind of historical significance, and it's inherited property now, they have to maintain it, they have to insure it, they have to take care of it. Do you not think that this is a very onerous thing to put on a family that cannot do anything with that home? Supposing the home had degraded? You know, you have situations, and the home is degraded, and they want to take it down and sell it to a developer, or build a new home for themselves. But in the meanwhile, they could, for up to a year, be paying electrical bills, be paying to heat the home, to insure it, and so forth. Have you thought of that? Is there anywhere in here that has a hardship escape for anyone?
I mean, our goal is not to have homes demolished, our goal is to have homes sold to people who want to buy them, you know, at a fair market price, and fix them up and live in them.
The practicality is that sometimes people stay in homes for very long periods of time, and they don't or are unable to maintain them.
Right.
And when they pass, the family can inherit a home that is no longer viable.
And those unviable homes can be deemed unviable by the Inspector of Building or by an engineer--
And how long a timeframe would that take?
Well, as long as, I mean, it could be up to the timing of the--
Year?
No, no, no. Yeah, within, at the front edge of that. Is it 60 days? Yeah, the decision-making process. 4D, during that period of time, you know, if an engineer finds that building is not habitable, or it needs to be condemned, then it can be taken out because it's a safety hazard.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So you mentioned 128 homes on the list now, and it sounds like you can actually add homes, or the historical preservation can decide whether or not something should be added. So it could, we're saying attrition, they're getting smaller, but potentially, if John Kennedy had tea under my pine tree, I could be added if it's deemed necessary by you to that list?
Not by me individually, but there is a subcommittee on the Historical Commission that has the Historic Properties Inventory Accession List. It's still being defined, but the current preference is nothing less than 100 years old, which, we don't have very many of those that are over 100 years old, but it would be under those age considerations.
Thank you.
And we would expect it to grow. Like, 50 years from now, some of the homes that were built in the 1910s and 20s could be added to that historic homes inventory.
And just to echo something Dr. Jackson said, I don't own a home that can qualify as for this, but we're all trying to think, you know, how would we feel if this was our home? I don't see 128 people lining up out the door arguing against this. So have we polled those people who were actually impacted, and do you have a sense of how they feel?
I did. I, again, put it out on the town Facebook page, and I asked for open response, and I had 61 responses. And I made, I asked a question, "Do you own a historic home?", so that those who did could make commentary on the preservation of their property. And it was a majority, I don't remember how big, it might have been 70%, who, of those who owned a home, said that they would like to see preservation amenable to their property.
I would find that significant when presenting that term.
Yeah, I thought it was a meaningful measure, people saying, "We need to have something that says, 'I would like my family home that I grew up in to remain in its state.'"
Thank you.
Jill? I know it's late. I just don't--
It's like a song.
I'm a little cross-eyed right now. I just don't agree that this whole process from beginning to end is one year. That's just not what the language reads. It's not even close.
From application to approval of a demolition delay?
Exactly.
Right.
From ability to demolish, from application to ability to demolish.
Right, so in 148-4D3, it says, "If the building or structure is determined to be preferably preferred, the Inspector shall not issue a demolition permit for a period of 12 months from the date the Commission determined that the building or structure was historically significant."
Right, and that determination is made after the initial application, a hearing, a disposition on that hearing, a request for a demolition removal plan review, which kicks in a 30-day window, which could trigger a second hearing. And then after, all of that is said and done, multiple hearings, multiple 40-day, 30-day, and 50-day gaps in between, then you get that final disposition, and that's when the 12-month window kicks in. So this could go a year and a half, not one year, not 40 days. I just want to be transparent about the timeframe. Because you said this is for a delay.
Right.
That's quite the delay.
There are other methods of exit. If the due diligence has been accomplished, and the terms for demolition are found to be agreeable with the Commission, that there can be an early exit. You know, I would anticipate that people would market their homes and try to say, "Well, this is the home where, you know, our first hops keeper lived." You know, we have homes that meet that criteria, or ones that have, you know, founders of the town. And what we would expect to see is that if they've tried everything that they could, and they've marketed it, they've had open houses and such, and the only people that want to buy it because of the state that it's in are people that want the three acres to put, you know, X number of houses on it, then I think the writing would be on the wall at that point.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Hello, Judy O'Connell, 11 Broad Street, speaking as a resident. The question on the hardship was asked, and the answer is, I think that's an important one, and just seeking to understand, to get a building permit in the town of Wilmington for any other project, it's much less than a year. Just if the petitioner can speak to where the one year came to be, because when you talk about fair market value, if you have anyone that's interested in the property and it's subject to a contingency of having to up to a year plus wait, I believe that that would impact the value of the property just based on that one criteria alone.
Yeah, one of the things that, as I was looking at the bylaws of the neighboring towns, one year is what the majority of the towns use. Lexington had an 18-months delay on theirs, which, granted, they're not a farming town such as Wilmington, they have larger, perhaps more notorious residents. But the town of Reading, one of the things I noted, you know, they had a six months on theirs, but they felt that it was not enough time to actually do the due diligence of trying to find an adequate buyer or alternate use for the building. So in conference with them, it was recommended that we put 12 months to be commensurate with our other neighbors. Again, keeps us from being easy pickings.
Can you also confirm if this includes municipal town buildings?
There are some town buildings that are included on the inventory, for example, the West Schoolhouse and the South Schoolhouse and the Scale Keepers Cottage. There are a few that you see around town that have placards on that were, you know, interested in having on the inventory. Those would also be included because they're on the state inventory.
Kevin McDonald, do you want to ask the board if they need to have any more questions? Okay. I thought this article was bad when I first read it, but the more discussion on this article, the more horrendous it actually seems. Can you just imagine if there was a kitchen fire, and the building was deemed not repairable? Can you just imagine waiting a year and a half to be able to demolish it? Can you imagine a widow who lost her husband that was the breadwinner, has to, is forced to sell the house, but yet she can't sell it because she has to wait a year, a year and a half to do it? It's just a really bad article, and I did want to thank Mr. Lovino for drilling down a little bit, but I think the one thing that you forgot is appeal periods and potential lawsuits on the town. And I just hope the people watching this will unanimously vote this down, because this is a really bad article. Thank you.
I just want to make one correction to what you said. You can sell your property, this concerns demolishing it.
Okay. I was just in a house in Brookline. It was a complete biological disaster. There's nobody in their right frame of mind that would keep this house, okay? The guy paid $3.1 million for it, and he has to wait a year to demolish that. Think about the interest rate that he has to pay on that, okay? But going back to somebody in Wilmington that was in a precarious situation where they had a mortgage, and they were going to get foreclosed on in three months because they lost income, and then you're going to put this burden on them? It's a really bad article, and I hope you all vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment?
16 School Street, Don Lysko. You mentioned town buildings, so the Buzzell Senior Center, the blue building down by the, no? Okay, so that won't be affected. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on. This is our last article of the night. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3 of the Town Charter of the Town of Wilmington by adding the following language, quote, "Elective officers shall serve no more than two consecutive terms," unquote. To the end of Section 3 of the Town Charter is shown in the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington revised, or take any other action related thereto. The petitioner is here. Would you like to speak?
Again, my name's Don Lysko, 16 School Street.
Oh, no, he's a petitioner.
I just think the town and the residents would benefit from a more frequent change in our elected officials. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Scott?
If I may just ask the petitioner where he came up with the two terms and why he feels that's appropriate over, like, three or four terms?
It was good enough for George Washington.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It was good enough for George Washington, should be good enough for us. I collected 200 signatures to show interest in the article, in Leckenhauer.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Teresa.
I'm sorry, Greg.
If I may just ask a question of the petitioner. I'm not sure what is meant by the term "terms." So, for example, we have, decades ago, I was appointed to the school committee midterm and then ran for, had to run for the remaining one year on that three-year term. Would that count as a term? Or is that, I mean, I'm just, I think it's important to have clarity. And people, not all of our elected officials start at the beginning, you know, are elected at the beginning and run for their whole three years, and then there's another three years. So I just, I want to, you know, I want to be clear, I think it's important to be clear, we're going to restrict this to consider all of the different possibilities. So have you considered those types of situations in drafting this language?
Well, I think it'll be two full terms. That's the way the intent is.
So somebody could serve eight years if they were appointed, one year into a two-year term, and then could serve two full terms after that?
Yeah, I think it's just to get more frequent turnover in the elected officials.
I understand the purpose behind it. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to process the language because the language is all that's left when all this is over, and somebody has to interpret it, to say, "Yeah, you can run and you can't run."
Well, I don't think it'll be me that's interpreting it. I mean, if you want me to, I can, but...
Well, I'm just, well, you wrote the language, so I think, you know, that's why I'm asking you for the interpretation. So it, to me, it lacks clarity, I guess, is my first reaction.
It says two terms. I think it's pretty straightforward. Doesn't get any more clear than that.
Well, do you need... Thank you.
Scott, go ahead.
I mean, I have the same question as Brad here. Can we ask town council if he's willing to or able to chime in if two terms means two full terms or a partial term and a full term? Does the language specify that?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. The language simply says two terms. I can't interpret something that was written by someone else, but I agree, there's a concern. Is a term a full term, a partial term, an appointed term, an elected term? So there is, there really lacks clarity.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the Finance Committee? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Bendel.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg Bendel, 57 Roosevelt Road. I do rise in opposition of this article. I consider myself pretty lucky to have grown up in this town, a town that was built on the shoulders of volunteers who volunteered countless hours long before I was born, and I'm grateful that that tradition continues. I've also had the good fortune to serve on the Board of Selectmen for the past nine years. And for context, I have served with 10 other select persons during my time. So I think that's a pretty, pretty big number, actually, if you ask me, but that's just one man's opinion. I'm grateful for all of their volunteerism, those who have come before me, those that I'm currently serving with. I'm also grateful for my colleagues who serve on the school committee and those who are brave enough to be the moderator, who also volunteer their time and are unpaid. And in a time where I think most, some people are discouraged with our federal government and state government, we still have true democracy at a local level where volunteers step forward to serve their community without being motivated financially. You know, when I was growing up, a lot of kids wanted to serve in the NFL or be in the NFL. I wanted to be on the Board of Selectmen. Takes a lot of courage to admit that at this point, but I know firsthand how much time and effort you folks put in to this, including yourselves who volunteer. I don't have to tell you that. I'm standing in front of you almost 11 o'clock at night, speaking with you. I've witnessed the hard work and dedication that goes into it. I've also learned quite a bit from my predecessors and those who I've served with. I've learned an incredible amount from the people who work for our community, the employees, the talented employees that we employ. And even nine years in, and I haven't learned at all. There are still things that I'm learning to this day. For those reasons, I find myself in a position where I can no longer continue to make that commitment, and therefore I'm not seeking reelection. And it's for that reason that we have elections every single year. And if the people aren't pleased with who they have representing them, they can vote them out or they can run themselves. I think we have a pretty good process in place. I'm grateful that we're one of the only places around that still relies on volunteers in what's such a critical role in our town government. I think we should be encouraging people to get into town government and not finding ways to discourage them to get into town government. And so I just want to close by saying I appreciate all the time and effort. I know firsthand how much dedication you give to our town, and I appreciate all those who are willing to step up and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kevin McDonald. If we had a true democracy in town, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen would answer questions. If we had a true democracy, we would have selectmen that actually signed the warrants because I've actually put in public record requests for the warrants, and I've seen the warrants not signed by some selectman that were actually at the meeting. When $12 million is coming before the board at the beginning of the meeting, you have to actually drag it out of them. How much is the warrants tonight? It's like a big process. I did want to thank Donald for putting this article forward. I would suggest that maybe you just amend it so it says two consecutive terms, whether they're partial or full terms, and that would eliminate any question and clarity. In some cities, we see that they have city councilors, and those city councilors are actually paid. When you're looking at $150 million budget and we have selectmen that get the warrants on a Friday and the meeting is on a Monday, it's very hard for me to believe that a selectman has gone through $1 million of expenditures over the weekend and drilled down to be able to see, are we paying somebody who's not legitimate? I've talked to people that work for big companies and they get hacked. And one lady that I know, or that I'm aware of, she was fired because she worked in the finance department and she paid a bill of $60,000 for a bill that was illegitimate. But it looked really close to that bill. And so it's my belief that our Board of Selectmen have failed us. I think the people in town don't want to run for the Board of Selectmen because they don't want to serve with other people who are a joke. They just feel as though serving on the Board of Selectmen would be useless because we're serving with people who are not that smart, they're not transparent, they have no desire to make the town better. If you look at what we're faced with losing funding in the state, basically, Mr. Bendel could have brought forth an article for a home rule petition and had a vote at town meeting this year to petition the state legislature for an exemption to the MBTA bylaw. But he didn't. He failed us once again.
Thank you for all your comments this evening. Have a good night. This concludes our meeting of the Finance Committee. I do want to just make a note, on Thursday...
Can I make an amendment?
I just want to remind everybody, on Thursday, the 20th, we will be reviewing all these articles and voting on them. No public comments will be taken. Did you have a question, sir? Did you have a question?
Don Lysko, 16 School Street.
I was just wondering what the process was to amend the article.
You can speak with our attorney right there, bud.
Just briefly, an article cannot be amended. Action could be taken at a town meeting through motion, but an article, once it appears on the warrant, cannot be amended. Town meeting is what, you petitioned an article to put on the warrant for the town meeting, the article's enacted on by town meeting, but once it's placed on the warrant and the warrant is closed, that is the article. Articles are not amended, motions are made.
I would just recommend to Mr. Lysko that he get additional counsel who actually knows what he's doing because amendments are offered all the time at town meetings.
All right, so we have...
Maybe we need to get a new town council.
...dated February 13th. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve the minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Great job.
Thank you.